Good evening, folks. We do have a few counselors going to be logging in from our closed session. So please give us a few minutes. Do we have all of the counselors with us? I am limited to four squares on my phone, folks. I apologize. I'm once again having issues with my air dry press this week. So I'm stuck on my phone. Can Jack, can you help me out this evening?
I see Tom, and so.
Steve, are you with us?
People may have to check in. Okay, Richard?
This is Richard. I'm here.
Dave's here, yes. All right, we got everybody, Steve.
All right, thank you very much. And do we have Eli?
Yes. Yes, I'm here.
All right, thank you very much for joining us, folks. I will now call this meeting to order. Again, thank you for coming back to a meeting, even though we had one just two weeks ago. So I will open up the meeting. And if folks could, please stand and point in the direction of the nearest flag or our Pledge of Allegiance. All right. All right, we will begin with reporting out from our closed session. At this point, we actually have no reportable items from closed session. So we will continue that discussion. And at this point, we have had a request from our attorney to adjust the agenda and move item number 11 into the third spot. Let's see. Yeah, sorry, into the fourth spot. So counselors, do we have any opposition to moving item 11 into the number four spot?
I'll move that we accept the agenda.
Can I make another comment about the agenda, please?
Yes.
So I would like to point out that only two items it's calling for a roll call vote. I would like to suggest, maybe being best practice, that every item, if there is a decision being made, that we do a roll call vote for each agenda item from now and into the future.
I would support the recommendation. Counselors?
Maybe we should move, I mean, the third item might take a while. It's possible to move number 11 into the third spot and shift everything down a little bit, considering having someone who's being paid to listen to this.
Russ, were you planning on kicking around for the feasibility analysis discussion?
Items one and two were the two that I was planning on participating in and then monitoring item 11. So if you could potentially move item 11 to number three would be great.
Okay, 11 into three, that works for me. So can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda with moving 11 up to three.
I'll second it.
And roll call vote for every item, please.
Okay, and add the roll call vote for all discussion items. Or decision items, I see.
Any comment regarding the agenda? Okay. And again, Jack, I'm going to ask you to kind of keep tabs on speakers just because I can only see four pictures at a time.
Glad to help.
All right, so we have a first and a second. Do we, all those in favor?
Hi.
With the roll call to see who's in favor, give it a shot, practice.
Dave, are you, are you able to do this right away?
Right now, might as well get this, get it going here. So we can start with a roll call vote for approval of the agenda, starting with Councilmember Grover.
Yes.
Councilmember West.
Yes.
Councilmember Clompas.
Yes.
Councilmember Davies.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ladwig.
Yes.
And motion carries with a 5-0 vote.
Thank you very much. At this point, we will move to approval of the minutes from our January 26th meeting. Looks like Council, City Council number two will be reviewed at the next regular meeting. Do we have any discussion or substantive changes to the minutes for January 26th?
There are no minutes included. We're doing it next time.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, you're right. Sorry, I was just looking at the agenda. Thank you. Council reports and committee assignments. Let's start with Mr. West.
Oh, I don't have any.
Okay, Mr. Clompas.
Yes, I just have the Trinidad water report. So perhaps it might be best if I share my screen. Little update, so let me go ahead and do that. Let me know in a second here. Share meeting window. And that's it. I'm going to go to full screen here. Okay, so can everybody see the screen? Is that, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So I'm going to make a couple of comments and get through this as quickly as I can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the time. This Water Committee report is an overview of our water system with suggestions to make it more sustainable. I want to make it clear that I did not collaborate with fellow Councilman Jack West. He's also on the committee, out of respect to him and to prevent a potential round act violation. I feel a little bit like Al Gore tonight when he made his first presentation on the inconvenient truth. I've received dozens and dozens of emails from Trinidad and non-Trinidad residents. While some have labeled my behavior as abhorrent and questioned my ethics and motives for asking difficult questions. When you mention Mad River, people get mad. One resident told me that if Liffenholz Creek dried up, the town should close before accepting water from the Mad River. Discussing water issues I found creates fear for a lot of people. One fear is running out of water for everyday use and insufficient water for putting out fires. If we had a serious fire in Trinidad and multiple hydrants were used, we'd empty our two redwood tanks within about three to four hours. Another fear is having more water than what we need that would create growth, not in Trinidad, but in West Haven and north to the Big Lagoon. I want to share that I don't mind being the council member who asks difficult questions. That's my responsibility as a public servant. We can learn a lot when we ask difficult questions. And I've also learned in governing that we can disagree with each other without being disagreeable. So I want to share this short report. This is what Trinidad looked like in the mid 1960s. So I think an appropriate goal for the Water Committee would be to provide a drought resistant water source for Trinidad, but not enough water to stimulate growth. So this is an aerial shot of the town in 1960. And this is one I took last month from hiking the head.
Richard, nothing's appearing on the screen for me and anyone else is having that problem.
Yeah, it's true. We can't see anything, Richard. We have blank screen.
How about now?
Well, we see us.
One second.
Did you download it to share it?
No, let me do it one more time. I apologize for the, for the mix up. So. One second. Okay, you can see the screen now, right?
We see us, I can.
You see us, okay. Let me move this and try it again.
Do you see a screen that asks you to share the application?
Richard, can we follow along in the packet?
Yeah, can you, can you see it now or you can't?
No, it, you keep coming back to the Zooms or the web X screen. Simply follow along with what you presented in the packet?
Sure, let's do that. Can someone bring it, pack it up? Can Gabe bring that up at all?
He's trying.
Okay, thank you. I don't know why it's not working this time. Really strange. How about now? No.
You can see it now.
It's got to turn now, got to rotate.
Are you able to see it now?
Yeah, we're able to see it now.
Okay, thank you.
That's even better.
Okay, wonderful. So again, I apologize for the delay. Here's what the city of Trinidad looked like in the 1960s. And this is what it looks like today. The amount of growth left is really a lot behind Murphy's and the little horse pasture by the school. So because of my research into the water content, again, I'll go through this as quickly as possible. Prior to the 1970s, the city used Mill Creek. When that became inadequate, the city moved to Liffenholz Creek on the Green Diamond property, upgraded the water plant, and added two redwood storage tanks. The problem in some cases of using surface water is because of the organic material when it interacts with chlorine to make it potable water, you get these disinfection byproducts. And the city periodically has had difficulty with this. And it's a problem when you use surface water in general. You would think with more rain, it would be better, but it just mixes up more material, makes it more difficult to filter out. Now, Liffenholz Creek has been decreased in its water flow. We realize that every summer it goes down because of a lack of rain. This year it went down enough that the city manager was required to notify the California Department of Fish and Wildlife because of the low measurement. Although the measurement, I'm sure, has gone up, our current flow meter is unable to measure above one cubic feet per second, unfortunately. That's something that needs to be addressed and to be fixed. In general, it's not just California. Also Humboldt County is in a drought condition. This is a map from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration's Drought Information System. 100% of the county is in moderate drought. 76% is in severe drought. And 61% of stream flow is below normal in California. When I went back and researched what has been done already to study the supply of water, Supervisor Madrona was very helpful in providing a list of the different studies that have been done in Trinidad. The most recent one in 2019, the city spent or invested close to $100,000 in really having a complete assessment done of its water system. One of the outputs of that report in January of 2020 indicated that under normal water years, Liffenholz Creek is sufficient for supplying the city's demand and even future demands for additional capacity. However, during drought conditions, water supply may be insufficient to satisfy existing water demand. One comment was made at the last council meeting about living within our means. One thing I've learned about water systems in California is that they cannot be a profit center. In other words, you can't supplement a deficit in a city's budget by doubling the water rates, for instance. The city has not increased water rates since 2018. And currently, without an increase, we're operating at a loss or will operate at a loss by the end of the year. I've learned that its largest customer is the Trinidad Ranch Rio Casino. And I will stress that these two or three words, if and when the Ranch Rio were to obtain water from another source, the city rates may need to increase to cover fixed overhead costs of running our system. And one comment that was made in one of the dozens of emails I've received was that we could make that up with just adding more customers. But I would caution that because we may not have sufficient water if you continue to add customers to the water system. Water security is also an equity issue. It, it really affects housing even within Trinidad. And there are more equitable ways to control growth than not having enough water to go around. One of the important things I've also learned is that it can sometimes take a decade to implement an improvement to a system that collects water and processes water for a city. So none of these things happen quickly, but they take time and planning by cities. It's also important that we have an environmental sustainability. The city already imports and uses water outside its watershed. Obtaining water from Liffenholz Creek is not necessarily more sustainable or environmentally friendly than obtaining it elsewhere, including the Mad River. And Mad River aquifer water that's sourced from 60 to 90 feet underground is naturally filtered and requires less treatment than surface creek water to pass California water standards. If we look back at the major investments that have been made in the city's water system, and this may be news to some people, major investments really are about $4.8 million. The majority of it made eight and nine years ago, back in 2012 and 2013, at a little over $2.7 million. And I want to point out that in 2013, when items were not covered by the SWRBC grant, the Ranch Rio was able to get money from the Indian Health Service to pay for a generator, interior facility painting, a vacuum excavator, and a trailer, the amount of $136,000 that was given to the city. What I've learned also during this time is that no funding was used to expand our storage tanks that go back over 50 years and our water distribution system. As has been noted in monthly water reports, we lose over 20% of our water that's treated every month, which is about 65,000 gallons that just simply disappears in the system. So there are ways that we could increase water resiliency by having more storage and by fixing the leaks that we currently have. So some of the choices that we have of making the water situation more resilient or stable in Trinidad, one choice is to do nothing. One citizen wrote an email that said the best course is not to change anything. Just leave it the way it is. I don't necessarily agree with doing nothing. That's what's been done in the past. A second alternative is to follow Supervisor Madrona's concepts of initiating engineering studies to obtain permits to drill aquifer wells and create multiple storage ponds higher up on the mountain that may require pipelines to get the water back to us. And that is an option which we should consider. And another option is sourcing water externally from the local Mad River aquifer system. And the cost of this study could be reduced because we've really paid for the study earlier under different conditions. It may be that we don't need a large pipe at all that would supply Trinidad and Trinidad's water plant. We need at least a four inch pipe because we need to provide water from Cal Fire. And the major difference in this feasibility study is that the city would not be paying for the entire cost of the trunk line. One of the significant issues that we, as a city, need to decide is whether we want to continue to have our own water processing plant. If we were to receive water from Humboldt Bay Water District, there would be no need for us to have our plant. That particular expense will go away. And it's something that needs to be discussed and needs to be evaluated. Now, this is an image right up the street where I live. I took these photographs this past week of the repair done, the temporary emergency repair work done to provide water and storm drain repair because the trail kind of slumped a little bit down the bluff. On the photograph on the right is my foot, and it shows what a six inch pipeline would look like. So running out of water is an emergency. We understand that it's going to take some definite work, a long time work, to improve water resiliency in town. And having a long-term reliable water plan will impact the quality of our life and the value of our homes in generations to come. So one of my final slides is that our water situation has been pushed aside for more than a decade. This problem impacts all of us, but especially for Trinidad residents. And everyone's opinion counts. I've been very pleased and very happy that so much public comment has been entered on this issue. I love to have the public comment on other issues that we address. That's important. Public activity is very important. And supporting feasibility studies, either with Humboldt Bay or with Supervisor Madrona's concepts, does not in any way commit the city on a particular course of action. There's no benefit with having less information or options. And doing nothing is really not an option. So my final comments to everyone, as I close this out, is that this may be a surprise, but I'm not recommending either water option for Trinidad. Until a plan is fully evaluated for cost and outcomes, I'm a skeptic of any opportunity, as we all should be. I want this to be my final report for the Water Committee. I'm recommending this committee be dissolved. It has served its purpose by delivering a drought communications plan last October. The City Council should assign a long-term water planning council, either assigned to the Planning Commission or a bona fide public committee with public members and public hearings, to be chaired by someone more capable than myself. I'd be happy to go back to discussing why we should have a three-way stop sign at Trinity and Edwards to give pedestrians a fighting chance to cross the street. Or why we should move our trash day from Friday to Thursday. With the Vanmark Trail closed, visitors have to walk along Edward Street to get to the beach. And I'm concerned with no speed limit sign. Cars will speed up the hill, and a pedestrian with a stroller will go around a trash can and be hit by a car because of that problem. Sometimes even small changes can have a big impact in our health and our welfare. And with that, I thank everyone for listening, for their participation, and I yield my And with that, I thank everyone for listening, for their participation, and I yield my time back to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, Richard. If I could, let's continue that discussion into our already agendized items. Mr. Davies, do you have any committee reports for us?
The trails committee will be preparing, will be presenting later in the meeting. No, thank you.
All right, thanks. Mr. Grover, did I already ask you? I'm losing track here.
Yes, I haven't given a report yet. I was able to attend the Redwood Coast Energy Authority Monthly Board Meeting. I was also able to secure positions on the two subcommittees I wanted to be on of racial equity and the offshore wind for one of my long-term aspirations. I did have ex parte communications with Richard Klompas regarding his water report because it was in my yard, so we talked about it for a few minutes, about ten minutes, and didn't really go beyond that. I had, you know, a couple ideas of extending the sidewalk on the north side of Edwards, but that could be, you know, that'll be in the future. I'll be coming with that more in an organized fashion, and I guess that's about it. Thanks.
All right, thanks. And Richard, if you don't mind to stop sharing your screen, that would be helpful.
That's not me. That's Gabe.
Oh, sorry. Gabe, if you don't mind. Yeah, when you, I don't have any report. The Humboldt Transit Authority met, but there were no, it was really just assigning new leadership on the board, so nothing to report there. At this time then, excuse me, we will move to staff report. Eli, turn it over to you.
Okay. So I do have a staff report that I prepared, was added to the agenda on Monday, and one of the things that was mentioned in there was regarding ethics in public service. So this is going to be held on Thursday, February twenty-fifth. It's from four PM to six PM. And any council members or staff that are interested to let me know. There's no charge for this. This is part of the Humboldt County Employment Relations Consortium, which all the cities are a part of, and it's going to be presented by the law firm of LCW, Liebert, Cassidy, and Whitmore. So if you haven't done this within the last two years, let me know, and then we can put you on that list. The other thing is that the Redwood Empire of the League of California Cities, which we are a part of, they meet quarterly, and their next meeting will be on Friday, March the fifth. It'll be a virtual meeting, and that will be held from one PM to three PM on Friday, March the fifth. The program is Paul Mitchell, owner and CEO of Redistricting Partners, talking about California redistricting for two thousand twenty-one. There's also Senator McGuire and Assemblymember Wood are also invited, so it's not, we're not sure if either or both will attend. So I can forward that. We need to RSVP whoever's going to be attending, so let me know on that. And then the other thing is as far as Verizon update, their update is that the, they're working with the property owner, and they're planning construction to start in March for the cell tower there. So all the paperwork, the building permits and so on have been approved, and so they're getting ready for construction. And in addition to that, I do want to mention as far as the law enforcement, Lieutenant Miller said that he was unable to attend tonight because he is teaching a class at the Police Academy. And I will, at the next meeting, have at least one of our new officers attend. So I tried to set it up for him for today and unable to have, he was unable to attend today. And that's the end of my report. If there's any questions, I can entertain that.
Any questions?
I've got something.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, so thank you, Eli. I would like, maybe for the next meeting, I would like some updates. One would be where are we with the general plan in your staff report? Maybe an update on that. I read the minutes for the, the last available minutes for the Planning Commission meeting. There were a number of planning goals written in there, so I would like the council updated on what the planning goals are so that the city council can actually review those and decide where we would like the planning goals to be. And I would also like to know the status of the short-term rental renewal application packets. It's February. I think they're, they were due and should be completed, so I would like a report back on those three things. Thank you.
Okay, Tom, when you said three things, I wrote down general plan, the planning goals, and I wrote down the STR renewal applications. What would the third one be?
Those are three separate items. One is the general plan. One is at the last, the January minutes for the Planning Commission, there were a number of planning goals stated that the planner had goals for, but I would like them forwarded to the council so we can review what the planning goals are and decide on where we would like to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Naffa?
Can I ask a question?
Update Anita, then we'll get to public questions. I just want the council to know that we have a contract with a company to provide real-time access to the water flow in the creek. A lot more information that, that we have a contract that we should be able to access. And so I've asked Eli to follow up on that contract to make sure that we have that. Right now, we don't have access to that real-time data, and we have to make separate requests, and we get generally stale data, so I just want to let you know that we are making strides to have a more complete and timely access to our water information. So I just want to give folks that. So at this point, public, any comments or questions for staff report from the public? Anita?
Thank you. I was wondering, I think it was November, city managers think that the law enforcement schedule would be changed in January to work late hours and early morning. Has that been done? So they can patrol at late night?
So as far as the contract, I was referring to the sheriff's contract, and the sheriff's department, the sheriff's office, rather, has not set up a date yet. I specifically asked Lieutenant Miller today. I says that we have the meeting tonight, and since you're unable to attend, I says, you know, when are we going to have that contract? And he said he will be meeting with the sheriff tomorrow to talk to him. So they need to redo our contract and the contract for Blue Lake, or at least come up with a new updated contract. So that will be part of the new contract. In the meantime, we have been talking with the sheriff to have some night patrols for at least a few nights of the week, sort of to scatter it between having some day and some night. That's, that's in the works at the moment to try to figure out with their schedule what they can be doing as we're working towards the contract. Initially, I was hoping that we could solidify it in a contract, but since it's taking longer than expected.
Thank you.
And just a quick reminder to everyone to please keep your phones or computers muted. We had some feedback with that one, at least on my end. Other questions, comments for city manager?
I don't see anything there.
Thanks, thanks, Jack. Okay, at this point, we're going to move on to items from the floor, and I like to read it just to make sure I get it right. At this time, members of the public may comment on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes or less. Comments should be directed to the council as a whole, not to individual council members or staff. Council and staff responses will be minimal for non-agenda items. At this point, I open it up for items from the floor.
Hi, Cheryl Kelly.
Thank you. Just a very brief comment, just to follow on, I think on Anita's question perhaps. I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention that there's been quite a lot of dialogue on Nextdoor about crime, petty crime in the city, increasing concerns, and some of the suggestions have been things like neighborhood and community watches, additional sheriff patrols, which we just mentioned, the Sheriff's Citizens on Patrol or Scope program, and maybe participating in that from a Trinidad perspective, but I just wanted to bring this up because maybe it would be something, it would be beneficial to have the sheriff's, sheriff's department schedule a virtual meeting where they could potentially give homeowners some tips on safety. So we've just seen a lot of chatter about that on Nextdoor, and I thought I'd just bring that up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Other comments?
Comment back to Cheryl?
Yes, please.
Maybe you're muted. Are you going to investigate on having the sheriffs participate in like training for community watch? Because I would imagine that's part of the process.
Yeah, I think there is training for, if you, you know, engage in a neighborhood watch program, and I believe there are some folks, I know my neighbor on Seneck has a sign out, so there are some people participating in that, so there could be some training that goes along with that. But I think also maybe just having somebody do a quick, you know, thirty-minute virtual webinar for folks in town. And, you know, what are the right things to do? Because I see people asking a lot of questions, like, should I have an alarm system? Should I have lighting? You know, should I have a dog? You know, so on. And, you know, there are things that work and things that maybe not so well. So I, I just see people getting really concerned and, and, you know, scared. So it's something we should look at.
And that's kind of what I was referring to, like a training so that when people go out, they're not, you know, it's not the Wild West out there, that people actually go in an organized manner, you know, peaceful fashion.
Yeah, agreed. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Other items from the floor?
I have a comment to make about the same item, please.
Go ahead, Ms. Cox.
Hi, well, when I talked in November, we, we were looking forward to a January change of schedule, and just like Anita, it's been put, she had to say the same thing I was going to say. We feel like it's been put off and put off. No fault to the council, I'm hoping. I'm hoping it's a sheriff scheduling issue, but now we're getting closer to spring and summer and more, more tourism in town. The weather's nice, people are in. But we're not just seeing the nighttime things anymore. I think anybody that's read the Nextdoor site has real, is starting to realize now, these are braids and things. There's a gentleman here in town who his house was broken into during the daytime. He had probably gone to the grocery store or something. He didn't lock. He wasn't, he wasn't even out of Trinidad. He was somewhere in town, just had left, and his house was broken, was gone through. So that happened in broad daylight in less than two hours' time that he was gone away from his house. Someone told me tonight about Sage Coach, no, yeah, Sage Coach Road, Bucharest Lodge. These are happening during the day or not middle of the night like we had talked about in November and December and January. So we did a network, I mean, a neighborhood watch meeting here at my house a couple of years ago when we had a break-in in our neighborhood. I think the lady's name is Gretchen. She's very good. She has a lot of information. She'll tell you exactly how many people should be in a group, and there should be groups all over town. We can't, our neighborhood is one. I think Dwight has one perhaps over in his area. Every little area in town in their radius that they give you should have a network neighborhood. Excuse me, yes, neighborhood watch. So we need to be, this needs to be utmost important as we get into the summertime, springtime, big time season. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Other items from the floor?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, council members. This is Katrin Holman. During the last city council meeting, Supervisor Madrona referenced my family's project when he gave a public comment. As I noted then, every detail he used to describe our project had nature, false, and misleading information. Later, I learned that Supervisor Madrona also submitted this false information in the writing on the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors letterhead. So now in your public documents, you have false, misleading, permissive information on County Board of Supervisors stationery, and I am asking and I'm hoping that a note can be placed warning that this comment by Supervisor Madrona includes incorrect and misleading information. Thank you.
We will take that into consideration. Other items from the floor? Mr. Pinsky, are you speaking or are you off of mute?
Somebody's off on mute.
Any other items from the floor? Jack, can you see anybody trying to?
Anything. So if somebody wants to speak up, otherwise we won't know. I don't see anything there.
Right. Thank you very much for being a second set of eyes. At this point, we will close items from the floor, and we have one item in the consent agenda, the staff activity report. All matters in the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is requested by any council member, that item is removed from the consent and considered separately. A single opportunity for public comment on the consent agenda is available. Counselors, do we, any reason to remove the staff activity report from the consent and put it into discussion? All right, hearing none. At this point, I would like to open it up for public comment regarding the staff activity report.
I don't see anything.
Seeing and hearing none. Can we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda. A second.
We have a first from Grover, a second from West. Gabe, can you do a roll call? Vote on this, please.
Yes, Mr. Mitch. So Councilmember Grover?
Yes.
Klompas?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davies?
Yes.
And Mayor Ladwick?
Yes.
Vote carries five. Oh.
Thank you very much, Gabe. At this point, we will move to our discussion action agenda items. We have information from our city attorney regarding the big, bringing back an item that has already been voted on, and I just want to make sure for those listening in on the phone, let me get to that. Just give me a quick minute. Prior, let's see, due to the repeated service interruptions experienced during the January twenty-sixth meeting, city council meeting, January twenty-sixth city council meeting, various city council members have requested that prior action on the proposed water line extension feasibility study proposed by Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District be reconsidered pursuant to Trinidad municipal code. A motion to reconsider any action taken by the council may be made only during the same session or a recessed or adjourned session of the council. The previous meeting was adjourned due to service interruptions, and agenda items continue to the next available meeting. Such a motion must be made by one of the provisions side, but may be seconded by any member. Prior to any substantive reconsideration of the city's participation in the water line extension feasibility study with Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, a motion to reconsider must first be heard and approved by a majority of the council members. So thank you very much, Russ, for summarizing what our municipal code allows us. So I had, excuse me, I had discussions with, with Mr. Klompas, with Mr. West, and with several and with several city individuals who, and I also witnessed quite a bit of disruption and inability for all councilors to engage equally. And so I requested to bring this back to the city council so that we can feel assured that we've had full participation in the democratic process. So I would like to make a motion to reconsider this item from our January 26th meeting this evening.
I'll second that.
So we have a first and a second. Any discussion on this?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So I have a different opinion of what happened at the meeting, and people I've spoken to also do. It was full deliberation. There, we had a motion, we had a second, we had comments. I feel like if there was such an issue at the last meeting that we were going to have a problem with this vote, it should have been brought up before the vote was taken. Everybody voted. There were even questions on exactly what we were voting for. And also, it sounds like you've spoken with a majority of the city council regarding this. So I don't know how that really carry into today. That sounds like if you spoke with Jack West and you spoke with Richard Columbus, as you just said, that's three members to decide whether that this is going to be brought forward again. So I have serious issues with this agenda item.
Tom, may I just clarify, please?
Yes.
Really, I listened. I listened to their, their questions and comments, and I know that we were, that's definitely three people. And so that's why I'm asking to bring this back. So that's, and that's, I'm not trying to make excuses. I'm simply trying to explain the situation where I listened to concerns raised by two of the councilors. But that's mine, and I respect yours.
Thank you.
Right. I'd like to, I'd like to add that the last thing in the world I really want to do is bring something back like this because it's, it was taken care of, and I knew it was going to open a lot of problems if we reopened it. But at the same time, I didn't even know that David had said anything at all. I didn't realize he had spoken on this, so I missed that. And I had a number of people who, on both sides, who said that they just didn't feel they got a chance to speak. And I know at one point on a supervisor's meeting, I was shut out and unable to speak, and I felt like that was unfair. So I'm bringing this back just because some people felt they didn't get a proper comment. And as I said, without even knowing David spoke, I missed something too. So it's not, I just felt like it wasn't fair to everybody to get a chance to speak. So that's why I want to bring this back, and maybe we can attempt to do this without realizing that we have had lots of comments. We just need to maybe get the people who didn't get a chance to before.
And I agree with you, Tom, that I should have made this, this determination that night. In fact, I remember our city attorney nudging me in that direction. So I take full ownership of not, of not dealing with this on the spot. Anyway.
I hope I'm not, I'm not saying that you're responsible for, for doing that if anyone had, had an objection. So I'm not trying to, to point a finger at you. So, thank you.
I don't, yeah, no, I don't feel, I guess, yeah, I'm just, I totally appreciate your perspective. Mr. Columbus?
Just to know, when I was trying to make my points last time, Councilman West had difficulties hearing me. In fact, at one point when I was speaking at 8:06 PM, he's trying to call me on my mobile. And I'm looking down at my mobile thinking, why is he calling me? And he's trying to say he can't hear, thinking that no one else might be able to hear either. So if Councilman West couldn't hear what I was saying, I'm just a little bit concerned when someone makes a decision and they can't hear all the different arguments or all the different points. It leads to me that there's a technology issue, and when there is one, it needs to be recognized. If the vote goes down exactly the same, I'm fine with that. But I want to make sure that technology was not the issue that created it. It's much different doing a WebEx meeting that is sitting in town hall and knowing that everyone can hear what you're saying and can respond properly. My concern is process, and I feel that the process we had just wasn't equitable at all. Thank you.
Can I? Yeah, I agree that there was a technical issue that night, or actually more than one. There's no denying that. But when it came back, if Councilman West had such a difficult time hearing, when it came back to the vote, there should not have been a vote taken. He voted on this matter. And, but that would have been a really good time to say, you know, I didn't hear anything. I don't feel comfortable voting on this. Let's discuss that. So that's the point that I'm trying to bring up. Thank you.
And I will say that I didn't realize that. I didn't hear, I heard a lot of Richard, but I, but I think part of it was I didn't even know David had spoken. I didn't know that till later. That made me feel like we maybe should look at this again.
Steve?
Yeah, go ahead, Richard.
So, so one of the issues was when, when Jack, when Councilman Jack was able to log back on, I posed the question to the council, would you like me to repeat my message? And the answer was no, it's not necessary. So again, I just feel that if everyone is able to hear the different sides, they can make a decision without technology getting in the way. And again, if the vote goes exactly the same, that's the way it goes. I accept process, and I accept the procedure. I just want to make sure that we do it correctly. Thank you.
And I'm glad that you did look in and ask the lawyers of Mayor Ladwick, because that was, you know, that, that makes it feel legitimized to me too. And I don't know if that was the time to reiterate the point I was making now that we, the technology's here, or are we?
What we're deciding is whether or not we can bring this back. So this is a motion to bring back the question, and then the next item obviously would be the discussion. So, and I just also want to reiterate that my intention here really is to, really to ensure that all the councilors have had a, a complete discussion, and then we'll bring it out to public comment and then back to the council. That's generally how we like to run things, and I think there's some critical pieces missing. So anyway, that's, do we have any other counselor comments regarding the motion to reconsider the participation in the feasibility study?
And Steve, also, Russ is available.
Russ, are you trying to speak or am I missing something?
No, I think you're proceeding correctly. Just for clarity, the only issue pending for the council at this point is a procedural issue about whether or not to reconsider the feasibility study. Only if this motion carries will you proceed to item two on your agenda for discussion. And of course, you need to call for a public comment.
That's where I would head it next. So at this point, I would like to open it up to the public. Having heard the discussion, what we're trying to accomplish here is we have a first and a second motion to reconsider the item discussed on January 26th. So do we have any public comment regarding this current motion?
Yes, I would like to say something about that.
Go ahead, and please, also, this is mostly for my sake, but please introduce yourself. I only see the four pictures on the screen. And also, we are going to later ask folks to identify their name and then also their relationship to this. And I'll get to that for the next discussion item. But please introduce yourself when you're speaking.
Okay, my name is Latille Sabo Shumpert. I live in West Haven. I am married to Merlin Sabo. You maybe know who he is. I'm sure you do. But I have lived in West Haven for a while. I'm from Humboldt County. Daughter goes to school in Trinidad, and I love my county and especially West Haven and Trinidad for being so small and quiet, and I feel like the added of like water and having a pipeline coming up here so that we can have expansion is gonna be detrimental to our small-town life. And I feel like there are alternative ways to deal with water. Like there is not, and there's too much use of water for unnecessary things. So that is my two cents, I'd say.
Thank you, Latille. And if I could remind folks to mute yourselves, if you're on the phone only, to make sure that your phone is on mute. And then Cliff Holton, I see that your name keeps coming up, so perhaps if you could mute yourself as well. I don't mean to call you out, but I have limited access to what I can see. And also remind folks, thank you, Latille, for your comments. However, those comments are more appropriate if you decide to bring this item back to discussion today. I mean, sorry, right now, we are having a discussion, sorry, a motion that is procedural, should we bring this item back because of a request to do so? So please, please comment regarding the procedure that we are discussing.
Sherry Provol, hands up.
Go ahead, Sherry.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you for reconsidering this action. I don't know if you know, but that was the night, I'm sure you're aware of the storm. We were out of power here in West Haven, and I'm a West Haven resident. And I also have grown up here in Trinidad my whole life, and this is an important topic. And I'm, I'm sorry that I wasn't able to attend, to hear your conversation, to hear how you want to proceed with this important item. So just because there was a lot of people out of power that night, I think it's a really good process to have other people comment, because I could not make a comment. I had no, I had no way to be with you guys to make a comment. So I think you lost some ability to have a public comment because there were power outages. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Provault. And again, I'm going to, I think, Ms. Cox, I think your phone is ringing in. We hear some feedback, so 707-499, ending in 36. So if you could please mute your phone, that would be appreciated. Other comments from the public?
I have a comment from the public.
Oh, there you go.
I didn't, I have not made one noise, and it wasn't on, it was on mute, so I'm not sure what happened. I'd like to know who made the first and the second. I'm sitting here listening to this whole thing, haven't, have no other noise going on, and you said we have a first and a second. May I ask who made the motion and who seconded it, please? I did not hear that.
I made the first motion, and Mr. Grover made the second.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. So I'll go back on mute.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. It's me, Brian.
This is Elaine Weinrev, and I live in West Haven. Okay, have you guys been taking lessons from Donald Trump? Oh, I don't like the results of that election, so there must have been something wrong with it. The election last week was perfectly valid. I heard you do it. Yeah, there were technical difficulties, but you did hold a vote, and it was legitimate. And now a couple of you don't like it, so now you want to redo it. I don't care what your city attorney says. It smells bad. It smells like corruption. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
I do. Anita? Anita Thompson?
Go ahead.
Just as mentioned early on during this meeting, some people, including a council member, had difficulty being heard and hearing discussions and public comments. At the beginning of the meeting, I directed a comment to law enforcement, which was not heard. This is only one example of participants not being heard. Some audio was so clipped as to render it impossible to decipher. At one point during this meeting, as, as the council was advised, this was already been stated by the city attorney, that they could cancel the meeting due to technical difficulties. However, the meeting proceeded. Later, due to continuing frustrating technical difficulties, the meeting did have to be canceled anyway, and the remaining items were postponed. So please include this item for discussion and action at today, tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Other comments regarding this procedural vote?
Can you hear me?
I believe so.
Okay, hi. I can't figure out how to get my, my face up there, so I want to second.
Could you please introduce yourself?
Yes, this is Meg Stavsky. I live in Eureka. I'm a member of the NAACP and friends with people who live and work in Trinidad. Just from a procedural and a process point of view, I agree with Elaine. This has every appearance of people going back after the meeting, outside of the meeting, and feeling pressure from people who didn't like how the vote went. Whether or not that is actually what has happened is immaterial to the fact that that is what it looks like. And it is of really deep concern that had this been brought up at the time, as is required, that there's enough technical difficulties that this meeting has to be adjourned in order to have full representation and airing of all sides before we can vote, that is what should have been said. Instead, there is what looks to be a back door. We gotta, we do, because we don't like something about how, how this proceeded, rather than just purely technical issues. And it's, it's, it can't, it's just not, it's just not right. That's all. Thank you.
Other comments from the floor? I'm sorry, public comment?
Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
This is Cliff Holton. I live in Trinidad. We were trying to listen in on the meeting, and we got disconnected twice, and the second time we couldn't get back on. So we didn't even know what the vote was until the next morning. That's my comment.
All right, thank you very much. Other, sorry, other public comment?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
My name is Esther Benhaman. I live in West Haven. I've been a resident of Trinidad and West Haven since 1995, and I appreciate the city council members and your hard work. I do agree with Tom Davies that this should not be on the agenda for tonight, and it's voted on already. And that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Lucy Kostevra, longtime resident of West Haven. All I'll say is I was unable to attend at all because of the power outage. I'm in that category of people. That's my comment.
All right, thank you. Other comments?
I don't see any at this time, so speak up if you would like to talk, or I think we're ready to move on, maybe.
All right, at this point, I'd like to bring it back to the council. So we have a motion to reconsider our item from the January 26th meeting. At this point, Gabe, if, is there any, sorry, for the public comment, are there further closing comments from councilors?
I have a council meeting, but I'm.
I have a problem with how the motion was presented. You presented a motion before there was ever any public comment on this item. So if you would like to make the same motion, I would welcome you to do that again. But I think from a procedural standpoint, we may have been out of order.
I concur.
All right, I make a motion then that we reconsider participation in a feasibility analysis discussed previously at the January 26th meeting.
I will second again.
At this point, Gabe, if we can, I'm sorry, any closing comments from councilors? All right, Gabe, if we can do a roll call vote, that would be appreciated.
I'm on mute.
Mr. Sereas?
Sorry about that. Roll call vote here, starting with, starting with Councilmember Grover.
Yes.
Councilmember Clompis.
Yes.
Councilmember West.
Yes.
Councilmember Davies.
No.
And Mayor Ladwick. Sorry, Mayor Ladwick?
Hey.
He'll be back.
Some problems. Hold on. Give him a second to come back.
Standing by.
Oh, sorry about that, folks. I think the last I heard, the vote, or the roll call was to me, and I vote yes.
So we have the motion carries with a vote of four yes, the one no.
Thank you very much, Gabe. At this point, then, we will move on to, so again, folks, this is the discussion decision regarding participation in feasibility analysis to extend Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District's service to Trinidad. And at this point, I do want to reiterate the fact that we have received and read numerous comments from the public. And to echo what other councilors have said, the, the amount of civic engagement is, is very encouraging. So thank you very much for taking the time to voice your opinion and your concerns and your interest in this topic. But please know that we do have those topics, or sorry, we do have those communications. So we've been able to read those, at least if they were sent. Gabe, can you confirm when the last one was sent out to the council? If it was received by Monday at noon, or what were you able to accomplish with the public comment?
Yeah, I've received all comments through, even up to the meeting time at about 6:00 PM. Those have been included on the packet online, which is on the city's website and the document library and the public comment packet. And all comments have been forwarded to the council, so everything received up to the meeting.
Excellent, thank you very much. So in essence, if you sent the communication to us before 5:00 o'clock, we were able to get it because we were in closed session after that. So at this point, I think I would like to make sure that we carve out some time for John Friedenbach, who's on the call, who is the, with the Humboldt Bay Water Municipal Water District. And again, there was some, I had some issues hearing everything that John said. I imagine others did too. But if, if we can hear from John regarding the proposal, and then what I'd like to do is, is then have councilors ask questions of John because of some of the details, and then we'll open it up for public comment. And so that is how we'd like to, to run this next section of the, of this discussion item. Mr. Friedenbach?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Through your discussion, I'd like to start and point out a very important fact that was at this pleading. All of your prior pipeline studies have assumed that the city would be the only one constructing and paying for a pipeline extension from McInnesville. That is not the case to consider today. So using those old costs in prior studies as a comparison is invalid. The set of facts today for you to consider is, does the city council want to consider undertaking a feasibility study for the city to connect to a pipeline that is coming north to serve the Trinidad Rancheria? That's a hypothetical at this point, but that's the situation to consider. The scope of that project and the incremental cost to the city connecting to such a pipeline is considerably less than what was considered in those prior studies. How much? We don't know. That's one of the reasons why a feasibility study makes sense now. That's not to say that there is no value in those prior studies, but to use them as a cost comparison is just not accurate. There have been concerns about the size of the pipeline and the potential to extend the pipeline further north, which might promote development. When a municipality does general planning for infrastructure, that might be the case. However, the facts in this situation are unique. There are potentially two end-use customers who are requesting water service, the city and the rancheria. The feasibility studies will only focus on sizing a water line to meet those defined needs. So far, no entity north of the city has approached our district requesting water service. So at this time, we would not be sizing the pipeline for future growth. That said, the California State Water Board does have the authority to force water districts to consolidate. If they step in, none of us will have a choice. I just want you to be aware of that. I'm not, I have a few more comments. I'm not an engineer, but in reviewing your water distribution system, it appears to me that the logical point of connection to the city's water system would be either at your treatment facility or at your storage tanks. Both of these locations are south of the city and also south of the rancheria. So to talk about extending a pipeline north, causing growth inducement, seems flawed to me. If a pipeline connects to the city's water system located to the south of the city, then it would be the city who is in total control of who gets that water in your distribution system. Lastly, there's been some concern raised about entering into a feasibility study without knowing the cost. As I mentioned at your last council meeting, if you so choose, you could conditionally authorize participation in a feasibility study. The condition would be for your staff to obtain a quote from an engineering firm. That quote would be brought back to your council for consideration and approval. If the cost is reasonable, would approve moving forward. If the cost is too high, you could choose not to move forward with the feasibility study. So your council would be in complete control. I would be happy to work with your staff to develop a scope for a feasibility study if that is your choice. I'm not available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Friedenbach. Do we have, and I apologize, folks, I've got unstable internet, so I'm gonna leave my camera off for a minute. But do we have questions from the council for John?
I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead.
If we wanted to, I'm thinking of a kind of an alternative idea, so it would come up later. But I'm curious what your thoughts on this. If we decided that we wanted to only bring a water line across, across the river, because that would get water just to the other side, but we wouldn't want to have the line go any further than the rancheria. So we would want to expand the pipe a little bit to make it bigger, but it would stop at the rancheria where we could eventually, if ever became absolutely necessary to get water, that we could then work on putting a pipe to the, to our facilities. How would that, is that a possibility? Is that something we could consider?
I think you could consider it. I think that question's more appropriate for an engineering staff than, than for me, but it depends on the particulars. The issue that I can think of that could present a problem is, and, and this is why we're giving the opportunity to West Haven, CSD, and the city of Trinidad, is you size your pipeline based on the demand that you expect to, to use that pipeline. If you, you know, don't participate, if the city doesn't participate, West Haven has already told us they don't want to participate. And the pipeline is sized only for the demand from rancheria. You cannot then add the city or West Haven at a future date on a pipeline that's not adequately sized to deliver the quantity of water that we might need. So that's, that's the question in front of me.
Well, my, my idea is that we would actually increase the pipe size, size to the rancheria. So we could, in the future, if we needed to, we could be able to, we would pay to have that done. Then we would, in the future, have the ability to tap into that line if it ever became necessary. Because isn't the most expensive part of this trying to get across Little River?
Yeah, I can't answer that. We haven't even, you know, entered into feasibility study. So some of the prior technical reports that you have may have looked at that issue. But one of the options, if we get that far, in developing alternative routes for a pipeline. Our district recently successfully conducted directional drilling underneath the Mad River to replace a pipeline that we had on the abandoned Indian Mary train trestle. And so you could go under the river too. That's a possibility.
Thank you.
Other question from the council for Mr. Friedenbach?
Yeah, kind of a question, comment. I just, I'm trying to determine, like, of the water catchment systems and pump storage systems. So I want to know if having a comprehensive feasibility study would help for a comparative analysis with that. I think I asked you this before, but I, I don't know if technical issues stopped that from happening. Because I, I think there's a misconception that a feasibility study automatically means installation and automatically means growth, which it doesn't, because sometimes feasibility studies come back and say they're not feasible, that it's not gonna work. And if we have something like water catchment systems, and we're doing our own thing in Trinidad for independence, water independence, wouldn't that be a helpful bit of information? The most comprehensive information be the most helpful for those studies?
Well, that's really a question for your own council. I mean, if you want more comprehensive studies, then you need to initiate those. It's not. The focused feasibility study that we've asked, our district has asked your city to consider is simply tying it to a line that potentially is coming north to serve your rancheria.
So that, right, so there's no way to determine it until we actually do the study, and things like that? Is my, the point I'm trying to make to everyone, and.
Mr. Clompis?
Thank you. John, if the city were to enter into a feasibility study, how long would it take to have the results, to know whether it's feasible or not feasible, so that the city could potentially begin to invest money in other feasibility studies? In other words, I, I'd like the city to look at multiple options. Humboldt Water District is one of them. But how long would it take to come up with a study that would say, here's what you can do, and here's what the parameters would involve?
Yeah, I can't speak for the consultants, but my, my guess would be, you know, somewhere between three and six months. You might ask your city council engineer on that question. They could probably answer that more appropriately than I can.
Steve, I, I do want to note that Rebecca Crowe of GHD is representing Steve Allen tonight from our engineering firm, and she's on the call in case that's needed. And also Trevor Parker, our planners, on the call too. So if, if maybe Rebecca can help answer this first question.
Sure. And it, it seems like there's two items really being discussed. One is, you know, narrowing focus and on looking at the pipeline option. And I think it's a really good opportunity for the city to really understand what does that mean? And what would, you know, the different pipeline sizes need to be if, you know, water was to supply Trinidad? On the other side, I've been working with Becky Price Hall, and she is working on pursuing a planning grant that would cover long-term water resiliency. So that planning grant would be able to cover the broader spectrum of, you know, both, you know, local water catchment or, you know, other watershed options. And then potentially incorporate the information, you know, from the Humboldt Bay feasibility study. I think those two items are on different timelines. I think right now, there's an opportunity to really understand what would the participation in, you know, pipeline from Humboldt Bay look like? And then I, I think it's still important to pursue, you know, the, the larger resiliency questions at the same time. If that's helpful.
That answer your question, Richard?
Yeah, Steve Allen had mentioned on the last call that the fees will be somewhat reduced because some of the research has already been done. But I don't know exactly what that means in the way of what has to be done, both dollar-wise and then time-wise. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I can respond to that, you know, it's my, and again, some of this is still in flux. What does the final feasibility study look like, and look like and things like that? But, you know, some of the information that, you know, John and his crew would need, you know, is data that we have. For example, some of the current water system demands and usage, you know, you know, to the greatest extent feasible, you know, the city would leverage the existing studies that have been done. So I think some of that could be leveraged. I think some new information may be needed as well. But I think there are cost savings in that, you know, like, was presented at the very beginning. The city spent a lot of time and effort really thinking about, you know, you know, what are your current demands and looking at the future? So that information would, could be pulled forward.
Just one follow-up question for John. There has been a lot of concern, and I want to recognize this, that if water is brought up to Trinidad, it's going to find its way into other areas and develop areas that don't really wish to be developed, and I respect that. But what I'm trying to understand, if you could clarify, if you designed the pipe diameter that comes up and comes to Trinidad and is terminated there, where would the extra water come from to support other expansion? I'm just trying to see where would that come from so that others might understand how the water and, and the volume of water that comes up to the city of Trinidad?
Yeah, I appreciate all the concerns, and, and people are very, you know, vocal about their concerns. And that's fine. This is a public process. But I think I've addressed that question in my comments about where I think, and again, I preface out with, I'm not an engineer, but looking at your, your infrastructure, it looks like, at least to me, the most logical points of entry into your system would be at your water treatment plant, which is on Leffenholz Street or, or right there, and, or your storage tanks. Both of those locations are south of the city and are south of the Trinidad Rancheria. So I, I don't understand if that's where the pipeline ends and it goes directly into the city's infrastructure. How people are saying that, oh, the, the pipeline's gonna go north. I, I don't, I can't fathom that.
Other questions or clarifications from John?
I've got some questions.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, thank you. So a number of years ago, I saw some land for sale pretty much directly across the highway from Trinidad, up on Green Diamond Land. There were a lot of lots up there for sale. I don't know what the status of that is right now. But let's say a developer was interested in somehow purchasing many of these types of developable pieces of property. Would you, would you entertain a developer paying for a feasibility study to see about how much water they would need and how for them to get water to developable parcels? about how much water they would need and how for them to get water to developable parcels?
Would I enter, would our, if our district was approached, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah. So it doesn't happen very often, but our district occasionally does get approached by people that are outside our current distribution grid for what's called a mainline extension. That's what, basically what the Rancho Ria has requested. We do have one recent request similar to that along West End Road where a local resident asked to have the district locate an extended line to his property. It's over 4,000 feet and, you know, a single individual couldn't afford that. So it's, it's our custom and practice that when those requests come in, we staff does an initial investigation. And then we provide information back to the requister. And from that point forward, basically the requister pays all the expenses from that point forward. And if it becomes feasible, they, they actually pay for the construction. And then the district takes on the ownership of the mainline extension and we continue to operate it and maintain it from that point forward. That's typically the process that occurs.
Okay, thank you. So private, private interests can enter into an agreement like that with your community services district?
Right.
All right.
And, and just for clarification, John, they would have to be added to your sphere of influence?
Yeah, in, in this case, we're talking about a request that came from outside our district boundaries. The previous case that I was just talking about on Weston Road is within our district boundaries. So there's no extra LAFCO issues or, or water board issues of providing service outside our district boundaries. Those are two issues that would need to be addressed in the situation that's been coordinated today.
And, and I just wanted to bring up that distinction, you know, and as it applies to potentially moving a line north is the city has a defined sphere of influence within which the city can currently provide water service. And if the city were to provide water service outside of that, they would have to go through a LAFCO process. You know, some folks on the council may be familiar with a very small, single-purpose waterline extension that, that was discussed about to serve, you know, a Cal Fire Facility, but it was very specific. It was very limited and it had to go through that planning process. And so when you're talking properties on, on West End, you'd be looking at the LAFCO and service area boundaries. So there's a, a additional process beyond just saying, hey, can I have water? Yes, no, just to, to bring in the larger planning context and the other organizations that would have, you know, approval processes and public processes to allow any of that to happen. Thanks.
Thank you. So I have a question that kind of piggybacks on that statement that you just made. So at many planning commission meetings during general plan discussion and things, the word annex has come up quite often. So it seems that we have been told that Trinidad would maybe need to start annexing and we could provide water to these places that are annexed. So if Trinidad started annexing east of the freeway and north of the freeway, I don't know what the powers of annexation would be south, but I've looked at all the different service areas. Then that would be development and this water pipe would be needed to be sized for that development. Am I right?
Well, Trevor is also on the call and I think that's more of a planning issue. I think we should start with Trevor than if Rebecca wants to weigh in.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, so the city does have a defined sphere of influence and that is, you know, determined by LAFCO and it's based on, you know, what, what the services, the city thinks it can provide eventually, you know, potentially city limits. So it's a very small area currently. You know, when you're looking at, at options for this pipeline, I, I think, you know, you'll be looking at potential demand within the city's service area likely, most likely, which would make it possible for the city to provide service within the city's service area. So as you know, the city does currently provide water to about 100 connections outside city limits, but can no longer extend services to any additional properties without annexation. So I mean, that, that is a larger planning issue. I, I do think that, you know, the, in terms of long-term viability, the city might want to consider expansion at some time in the future. But I, you know, I, I wouldn't expect that that would be a, a large area. I think you'd be looking at the existing sphere of influence, which is, which is pretty, pretty small.
So can I ask a further clarifying question on that? So if, if, can the city proven, if they've proven they can provide water, expand their sphere of influence?
Potentially, yes. You know, it would require, like Rebecca was saying, there are additional agencies that would have to approve that, environmental documents, that, that sort of thing that would have to be done. But yes, that potentially, yes.
Okay, thank you. And one more question, maybe this is for more for the general manager. So let's say hypothetically speaking, since that's the term we're using tonight, the water pipe comes across and there's infrastructure there for water pipes to come across. Let's go back to my earlier scenario of private developers buying up land that could possibly be developed. Can they, can they tag a pipe onto the pipe that's already been sized? If that's necessary, run one next to each other? Would there be infrastructure available for that? And it would be easy for them to pay for? I know they have to pay for it, but if, you know, I don't know how much land we're talking about that's developable, but maybe other people do that are more familiar with that.
Yeah. So if I understand this question, you wouldn't do parallel lines. That's inefficient and it's extremely costly. I guess if somebody had enough money, they could, they could do that. But typically you don't do parallel lines. And you wouldn't ta, have somebody tap into the line if the line was sized for a smaller demand than what the, the new potential user is, is trying to draw out of the pipe. And if I was the existing customers, I would surely oppose that. Because that, you know, new person would be second to not some of your, your water flow. So, you know, the engineers can talk hydraulics better than I can. But, but the basics that I know are you can only push so much water through a certain size pipe under a certain pressure. And that's just hydraulics, how it works. So that's why it's important to size the pipeline correctly starting out. And that's why we came to the city of Trinidad and West Haven CSD to see if they were interested in looking at the feasibility. Because the Rancho Ria is pretty motivated to get a line up there. So this is, our district saw this is your opportunity to at least look at the feasibility. And, you know, after that, you can say, well, you know, it's feasible, but we don't want to do it. Or it's not feasible. And they're just too, you know, too expensive for us. We don't want it for whatever reason. We want to pursue the other proposals that Supervisor Metron has, has put forth. You know, all of those decisions come after the feasibility study. The feasibility study doesn't, you know, require you to take any action.
I have one follow-up. So I've also, thank you. I understand that. I understand the pipe science behind pushing water through a, you know, contained pipe and all of that stuff as well. So my, my further question is, I just lost it. Oh, so you've, you've mentioned inviting us to be in a feasibility study, but I've also heard that we would be going out and soliciting bids. So that would be the city taking the initiative on this. It doesn't sound like an invitation if the city has to go forward to solicit all the bids for a feasibility study. Do you understand my question?
I understand the question. So our, our district doesn't pay to add new customers. So new customers that they want to get added pay to join the water system. So that's, that's been our structure since the beginning. So the, the invitation, I guess, or opportunity that our district has presented to the city is, do you want to participate in a feasibility study? Yeah, there are costs associated with that. That's one of the issues that you've been discussing is what's, what's going to be the cost? So I think we've been very straightforward with, there's going to be a cost. Your city engineers told you the cost is going to be lower because you have all those prior studies. So, you know, I, I understand that you're a small city, you have a small budget, but there will be some cost to participate in feasibility study.
So like a little bit, little bit lower than $2 million? A little bit lower than $1 million? A little bit lower than 500K? I'm looking for some answers and so.
Yeah. So, so I, I honestly, you know, I can't go to an engineering firm and say, hey, I want you to give me a quote for a feasibility study that the city of Trinidad might want to do. I don't have the authority to act on your behalf. You wouldn't want me doing that. So we're at a, you know, who's, who's first, who's pulling the cart, so to speak. So if you want to participate, then it's really up to the city to, to council to make that decision that you want to participate. Direct your staff to participate conditionally based on staff getting quotes or a quote, however you want to run your process for a feasibility study. Have that, that quote or multiple quotes come back to the council. Then you will have definitive prices and scopes of work that you can look at and evaluate and then make your choice to move forward or not. So it's, it's a process. It's, I think people will kind of get ahead of themselves in, you know, getting to the end zone before you really got through the process.
Great. Thank you for entertaining my questions. I don't have any more questions.
Mr. Columbus.
If, if, if I could interject for a moment, Steve, before Richard, just following the thought as far as cost, I thought I'd turn over to Rebecca Crowe of GHD. I know I had spoken to Steve before, Steve Allen, our city engineer. And he was talking about a minimal cost. And, and he was saying it was like a matter of hours, meaning as far as, I guess, gathering all the data together from the prior reports. I don't know if he's shared anything with you as to what he, he felt it might entail?
Yeah. And it's a little tricky, you know, because I'm just kind of getting into some of this, understanding how these two pieces would play together. But, you know, I think this initial effort to start understanding it is very low, you know, on the order of $5,000 or less to, to really start getting a sense of. And I think, you know, John was also suggesting a really good approach is, is they're piece-wise. Like let's take the first piece, kind of report back, find what, you know, what have we gone? And then, you know, keep going. I think there's some concern that, hey, we're going to get involved with some, you know, multimillion-dollar feasibility study. And then a year from now, people are going to tell us what's going on. And I, you know, I think the, my sense of the process is it's a little bit slower. And at least right now, again, you have a lot of this information and it's, it's a relatively low effort. Like I said, 5,000 or less on that order of magnitude to kind of get over this initial hump to provide the information that's needed.
Thank you, Rebecca. Richard, you've had your hand up.
This is a question from John. And again, this is hypothetical. If the feasibility study is done and it shows a certain size pipe would come into Trinidad and, and if, again, this is hypothetical, if the city went ahead and did that and connected up and there was a future terrible drought and we wanted to be good neighbors to West Haven and have them somehow connect in, would there be sufficient quality of water or the pipe would only be sized for Trinidad? And we really would have nothing extra to share with neighbors?
Yeah, the, the way I envision this feasibility study and the way we've talked about it is you give us your current demand and, you know, whatever future demand you want to build into that for growth. It doesn't sound like there's too much developable property left in Trinidad. So I don't know what your growth factor would be, but, but the pipe would be sized for that. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't have the capacity for, you know, people joining on later down the road or extending, you know, your service to, to go north or, or what have you. You'd be limited based on particularly if the pipeline that joins your system joins it at your water plant or your storage tanks, you're going to be limited by the capacity of your distribution grid.
Thank you.
Existing distribution grid.
Because we've had discussions with, with West Haven about an intertie for an emergency. But if there really was a water shortage and a drought, you want to help your neighbors, but that, that would not necessarily give us excessive amount of water to share with others that need it.
That's, that's correct. And West Haven has, West Haven Community Service District has sent our district two letters of correspondence stating that they're not interested in, you know, joining us and having water from our water district. So I, you know.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the council before we open it up to public comment?
Russ, if I may?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Anyway, the point I want to be clear about as to the process going forward. As I told the city manager early on, our office has a service attorney-client relationship with Humboldt Bay Mutual Water District, serves as general counsel for them. If your council does direct staff to potentially engage and contract with the water districts in progressing with any feasibility analysis, we will declare a conflict and we do have conflict counsel available. Absent any appropriate conflict waivers, we will not take an act of the city on that point. So I want to be clear on that for your considerations, you chart your path procedurally going.
Thank you for that information, Russ. Any other comments before we bring it out to the general public from the council? All right, hearing and seeing none. At this point, Jack, if I could remind you to kind of help out finding people raising their hand and whatnot. But at this point, I would like to bring it out to the general public for specifically questions regarding a feasibility study that Mr. Friedenbach might be able to answer or questions from our engineering and/or planning staff? Or just general comments?
I don't see any at this time. So let's, so please speak up if you want to say something. There we go. Bryce?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. 462 Ocean Avenue here, Trinidad. And I've been listening with great interest to the discussion this evening. And as you know, I've weighed in many times on this issue myself. And I believe I'm going to stick with my prior position and urge the council to decline the invitation to join in the feasibility study. A couple of points. First of all, you're, you're already on record as being against the proposed Hyatt Hotel at the Rancho Ria. So on the one hand, if you agree to study bringing water up here from the Mad River, you're, you're, there's a disconnect between the position you've already. you're, there's a disconnect between the position you've already taken. And of course, they'll be requesting enough water for additional development up there, specifically a gas station and a mini-march, which would have tremendous financial impact on the city's finances. So I hope you're thinking that through when you think about this. And I thought that David Hankin, who's the, I believe, the president of the West Haven Community Service District, put in some very thoughtful and articulate comments about why the council should decline this invitation. So I direct your attention to those, and I know you've read them, but I'd like to strongly second them. And then as to Mr. Friedenbach's question about how could sending water to the south of Trinidad hooking up south impact development to the north? Well, the answer is simple that at this point, we have Luffenholtz Creek only as a source of water to distribute anywhere outside the city limits or in the city limits for that matter. Well, if we hook onto the Mad River, then we have Luffenholtz Creek plus whatever amount of water can be brought up to Trinidad from the Mad River. So I know it's not an unlimited amount of water, but it would substantially increase the amount of water that we could send outside the city. Now, there are people already arguing here that even with just Luffenholtz Creek, we have enough water, extra water, to provide the hotel, to provide other development outside the city. It becomes a question of, well, how much cushion do you want to reserve for yourself in case there is a problem? I think we can take care of our water needs for the reasonable future by looking to our local area, developed Mill Creek, the rainwater catchments, all the other suggestions that Supervisor Madron has put in so many times. So I don't see any reason to change your prior vote. One thing, every elected official doesn't want to be known as a flip-flopper. I would hate to see this council start going down the flip-flop road on this. So I'd like you to stay the course and Trinidad can take care of its own water needs.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Other comments and also just a thank you. We do want to make sure that everybody has enough time to speak. So just a reminder to stay within your three minutes. Other comments at this point?
Don Allen would like to speak.
Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, you know, if the city spends this money on the feasibility study, I think that money could be better spent fixing pipes, tapping Mill Creek, tapping the Luffenholtz Creek Springs as suggested by Steve Madron. I think spending money on this feasibility study just creates momentum towards justifying, irreversible momentum that would justify the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District extension to Trinidad. So, you know, I know it's easy to say, well, we will just size this to serve the city of Trinidad. But what guarantee do we have that once this feasibility study starts that you're not going to be all of a sudden looking at a six or eight inch line? I mean, I just, you know, quite frankly, I'm not trusting the city council right now because it just flip-flopped on its declining to join the feasibility study. So there's nothing guaranteeing that that wouldn't change in the future. So you might say, yeah, let's join the feasibility study. You know, we're going to save some money because we'll be combining with the Rancheria. But there's nothing to say that this feasibility study won't morph into, well, let's look at connecting these other systems, you know. The, I think what Tom Davies was referring to is the Trinidad Limited Liability Corporation lands, 240 acres on the east side of Trinidad that's been up for sale several times. You can be guaranteed that people with lands like that are going to be looking at this very carefully and they would be very supportive of joining in with this feasibility study. So I think it's a real concern that this will create momentum to join or to connect a lot of other parcels that we are all concerned about. That's the end of my comments and thank you for listening.
Steve, I have a couple more ready. Sherry Wu would like to speak.
Go for it.
Hi, I'm Sherry Wu. I'm the president of the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District Board. And I just kind of want to, first of all, shine a little bit of spotlight on our general manager, John. He's doing a great job and John answering all these questions and potentially, you know, this is important. These are important decisions and I totally respect everybody who's on there. There's like 58 people on the call here. Thank you for being so interested. And like I said, this is very important. One of the things that I wanted to also bring out was where our board is coming from. And that is, as many of you know, we embarked on this water resources planning process many years ago, and it continues forward to today. We still have a community advisory committee. And out of that process, we are trying to figure out how can we secure and maintain our water rights once the pulp mills went away? And so the three water use options are the in-stream flow option, which is us dedicating some portion of our water rights for environmental benefit on the Mad River, and that's continuing. We got a grant for that, that's continuing forward. Transport to a public agency was an option that a lot of us were kind of uncomfortable with. But there was enough people in the community who felt like we owed it to ourselves to at least look at that. Transport out of the area to a public agency at least would mean that, at least on the public side, people could be voted in or out if things didn't go the way we wanted. The third one was the local sales, and that's where this would be coming into. And, yeah, I just want to recognize that these are big and weighty decisions. But just to tell you where our board is coming from, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Wu.
I have Dwight as a candidate, he would like to move, will be the next one.
Go ahead, Dwight.
Thank you, gentlemen and listeners. Can you hear me? Gentlemen, okay, thank you. Just a quick comment to Bryce and others who are listening to his comments. I don't recall that the city is on record as being against the Rancheria's proposed hotel. But my recall is that we informed the Rancheria that we do not have enough water to serve a new hotel during the dry season. That's the first, that's the decision I recall. The second thing, I respect the comments of those who believe that we have enough water from our current sources. But this proposal tonight is to study, do we really have enough? Is to begin the study of do we have enough? And as noted by a couple of commentators already, there are plans to get grant money to find out just what can be done regarding the proposals from Steve Madron and others to, what would it cost to get more water during the dry season? My most, my strongest concerns have been ever since I came to the city and it was on the council for many years, I'm concerned about the dry season. And if we get an exceptional dry season, we are toast with our current system. So we need to either get more water from our current system by slow drains from uphill cisterns or catchments or some other, or drawing more water from Mill Creek, and we need to study that. I highly encourage that study. Tonight's agenda item says, let's study an alternative. Tonight's agenda item is not to decide that we're going to get Mad River water. And people who speak because they're concerned that we're going to get Mad River water are not speaking to the concern that many city residents, and I emphasize, gentlemen, that you represent the city of Trinidad. City residents are concerned about having enough water during the dry season. We need reliable water during that season. We need clean water, low-cost clean water. And we are cognizant, all of us in the city who have come here, came here because we appreciate the size of the city. We don't want a lot more growth. And I don't see that a decision tonight to study the possibility for a correctly sized water line is a threat to growth concerns. And besides which, tonight's decision is not about hooking up to Humboldt Bay water. It's about deciding whether this is an alternative. We need to have the data from this study, and we should have a data from the additional study alternatives. So I really recommend, gentlemen, that you consider approving this a low-cost study, and we can have the big discussion later in which the great number of people on tonight are concerned. So let them come back and talk about, once we have the data in hand, and your decision will be much easier if you have data and not just the motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
See if we have someone else to put up hand or say something, please. You have a comment? I'm not seeing any right now, so.
Anita Thompson?
All right, Anita, you're on.
Okay, thank you. Question, what guarantee do we have that Steve Madron's plan would provide enough water as an alternative source too? That's another question and another thing we need to look into. No matter what, we need an alternative source of water. And as homeowners in the city of Trinidad and Trinidad city water customers, my husband and I are deeply concerned about a pending water shortage emergency. At prior city council meetings, I have voiced water shortage and fire safety concerns to both the council and to our city engineer. I have raised the possibility of importing water from either Oryx or Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. Many people believe that connecting to Humboldt, we are concerned, excuse me, we are concerned because our water source is a creek. And as we all know, creek water levels can drop drastically. We saw evidence of this last year when the city asked its customers to conserve water because Luffenholtz Creek's level was so low. People who are not Trinidad water customers are voicing their opposition to this feasibility study even though they are not stakeholders. These people who oppose the study would not be affected if Trinidad water had to be rationed or had to be trucked in. They would not have their property value severely decreased or would they be unable to buy homeowners insurance. Many people believe that connecting to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water will promote development. Just because you believe something doesn't make it a fact. My husband and I are highly concerned that the future of our beautiful community might be determined by illogical arguments not based on science, data, and facts. It does not matter how many letters the council receives or how many public comments are voiced if these opinions are not based on facts and also an outcome that will protect the residents. Issue is not future development, but continued water scarcity due to long-term drought status and our limited water source. Please move forward with participation in the feasibility analysis to extend Humboldt Bay Municipal Water Service to Trinidad. Obtaining information does not obligate us, but to refuse information about this is extremely important matter would be unwise at this point. Thank you.
Other comments from the general public? Or questions for our resident experts?
David Hank would like to speak.
Go ahead, David.
You're muted, David.
Anyway, what I was saying was I would really rather not be speaking, but I sort of feel like I should, right? And I will just make a couple of points. Number one is I am a scientist, right? And I think there is a lot of reason for concern. My feeling like listening to this conversation is that Trinidad is contemplating getting into a very large project to solve a very small problem, right? Like when I look at your water supply, I find very modest issues, right? They arise only during the late dry season and only during drought conditions. I sent you guys a letter and you've heard them, of the many options that could be explored before you ever dream, you know, going into something like a pipeline like this. And then, you know, I did actually, you know, I got hopped up, you know, talking about it because it's something I've been worried about for the 45 years that I've lived here, just exactly this prospect, okay? But one of the things that I have not heard you folks talking about is, you know, the general manager of, you know, Humboldt Bay told you during this session that the most logical place to connect to Trinidad would be at the treatment plant, right? How does it get there, right? How does that pipeline get to Trinidad? What are the impacts of putting in that pipeline on other people that live around here? For example, the need to widen West Haven Drive or something like that. In other words, the project has all kinds of implications and repercussions for other people that live around here. And I think that's really important and that's the only reason, you know, that I participate in this in the census because I feel like this impacts not just you guys, but the rest of us out here. And I just ask you, as I've asked before, you know, to really consider that, keep that in mind when you're making your decision on going forth with this. Like the only reason we're going forth with this proposal right now is because the Rancheria made the request to the water district, right? If we had our druthers, we would carry out these studies and try to see if we could shape up Trinidad's water supply using all of the other things that have been discussed, but no action taken on them for many years. We would do that before we would ever entertain moving, you know, into a pipeline with Humboldt Bay. Once you said something like this in motion, you've got to be scared about it. The people that are concerned about risk and development is very well justified, right? The time to stop that would be early, right? And then if you take all these efforts and they fail to improve the status of the city water situation, then go back to Humboldt Bay. Same thing would be true for West Haven, right? But West Haven is taking some initiatives to try to improve our situation, and we're doing those now. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hankin. Other comments, questions?
I don't see right now. If somebody else, please speak up. Marilyn Sterling would like to speak. Oh, sorry, we'll get to next here, Marilyn, please.
Sorry, what was that, Jeff? I couldn't unmute myself there. I'm a, I strongly urge the city council to say no to this proposal. The city council has an excellent suggestion from Supervisor Madron, and I think they should investigate his proposal, which might resolve our concerns. I do have to disagree with Dwight that this study is not a tremendous step towards inexorable future development because I think it is. Please forgive me for spouting off cliches here because I think this is one place where they're relevant. This study is a slippery slope. It would open a Pandora's box and it's most definitely a Trojan horse. It would be moving towards the possibility of the beginning of the end and could end up eventually destroying our lovely way of life and our really beautiful pristine environment. If you think that this water will be limited to the city of Trinidad and one monstrous hotel, you're sadly mistaken. And in 20 years, we're going to look around and say, how did our city get destroyed? So I really think this is a last resort. I don't think that the time is right for it. And if you can forgive all my cliches, I think the city should say no.
Thank you, and Cheryl, it's your turn.
Yeah, it was just a real quick question and maybe a comment, but the question is for John, for the general manager. Is there an advantage for the city to undertake the feasibility study at this time? And by that, I mean because the Rancheria is also approaching the water district for service, is there a shared cost, you know, savings? Is there an opportunity to share information? I mean, I guess I'm wondering what the impetus is for the decision at this time.
Right, so the, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So the impetus is, as you mentioned, the Rancheria requests. So the impetus is, uh, as you mentioned, the rancheria requested a feasibility analysis to send a pipeline to them. If Trinidad doesn't want to participate, if West Haven doesn't want to participate, and they've already told us they don't, we're not going to include capacity in that pipeline to the rancheria to potentially have a, uh, access by West Haven in the future or the city of Trinidad in the future. So, um, that's, that's the impetus.
Okay.
If you, if you don't get on, uh, now, you won't be able to get on later. So I think that's a fallacy that some people are, are considering that, oh, well, our district will just, um, you know, put a new pipeline in or, or what have you. I don't think that's realistic.
Okay, thank you very much. That really helps clarify. I, I want to make a comment, I guess, if you, if I may, just for a minute. As the chair of the planning commissioner, now I'd like to shift to, to citizen of Trinidad. So as a, as a chair of the planning commission, I'd just like to say that the planning commission has had a lot of discussion and public input around the drought contingency planning, so planning for, you know, situations where we're, where we are short on water. We're also talking about a water resiliency plan if we get that direction from the city council. We had a water catch, I had a water catchment, uh, meeting with Supervisor Madron, the city, uh, planner and city manager back in June, where we talked about developing or asking for, um, plans that were sized and pre-approved for people to do water catchment. And so, um, our focus so far has been on sustainability. We've talked a lot about improving the systems. One thing I haven't heard a lot about, or we haven't discussed a lot, is water quality. And I, I noted today that the ETA has issued a concern that water systems under 500 people, there are some 27,000 across America that are failing and they're causing problems with contamination and, uh, they're having drought problems or having, I mean, any number of problems. So it's, it's not just us, we should rest assured, we're not the only ones that are, and maybe we're not in a crisis, which is excellent. But we could be down the road, uh, it sounds like potentially. So, um, that's going to cost them money to repair, but that's low hanging fruit. And so, you know, just, just from what I've heard from the, uh, public in our meetings of the planning commission, that is an area that we want to spend time on in optimizing the system. And so now I'm going to shift a little bit into my own opinion, based on everything I've heard tonight and everything and all of the planning commission meetings, and we've had many hours on this topic. I just believe that knowledge is power. And I think that the modest amount of money that we would spend on this feasibility to plan for the future, you know, have a pipe that's big enough that we don't necessarily need to tap into, but that option is there. I just, I just think that's prudent thinking for the future. I don't like the idea of, of a huge amount of growth. But the data doesn't really necessarily support that either. So, um, I am going to urge the city council to vote to proceed with the feasibility study. And those are my comments. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Look, Gail Kenny, please, Gail Kenny.
My name's Gail Kenny and I'm at, uh, on Ocean Avenue. And I just wanted to say I've lived in this house for 30 years. And there've been maybe a couple of times where, um, during drought years, that we've been asked to, to ration. The most severe one was a few years ago. And all we basically needed to do was not water our lawns or wash our cars. And at the same time, um, the city of Trinidad was still selling water to a local water truck who was, uh, you know, taking it to West Haven or wherever. So even then, when, um, we were having to ration, you know, a few years ago, the city still had enough water to sell it to, you know, outside people. Anyway, um, I just wanted to bring that up, that, you know, we've survived low water years in the past. Yes, I acknowledge that, um, with climate change, um, we might be having some more severe droughts. But I would like to encourage the city to, um, work with the existing water system and, you know, fix those leaky pipes, you know, put the money into something like that and enhancing the system that we already have. So I just encourage you to go that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, I don't see anybody else. Please, again, put your hand up or make a noise and.
Hello. Jack?
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, this is Katrin Holman again, speaking in support of this feasibility study. There were a lot of comments tonight, um, and even the opposition seems like to have still a lot of questions. The feasibility study will answer the, these questions. I went through these letters, you, you still received many letters for the last meeting and for this meeting. And, um, there were a lot of comments loaded with emotions, assumptions, predictions and fear. And none of these, none of these letters were providing you with any valuable data. This is a terrible foundation to base such a paramount decision off of. And while it is important to consider emotional feedback from the community, it's impossible to make an informed decision when you are lacking correct and reliable facts and research data. The feasibility study will provide you with the necessary information to make an informed decision. I encourage you to participate in this pipeline study. In the meantime, look into the feasibility of the alternative that have been suggested to you. Once you have the data and information, bring it back to the table, the data and facts and the letters, and then decide what is best for your water customers and the community. When you include important data and make decisions based on emotions and fear only, people will always question your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there someone else who would like to speak up? I don't. Ken Miller, are you, did you want to talk?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. I live in McKinleville. And, uh, you know, it's really clear to me that if you, if, if you talk to water salespeople or engineers, they're going to be selling you a, a bill of goods. And you have an opportunity now to preserve a gem, one of these rare, rare jewels. And the way you can do that is by just not, not going down this, this path. This pipeline is going to provide water for unfettered development. I urge everybody to read Patty Stern's letter where she points out that there are a thousand lots that could be developed. You have a lot of local expertise, um, in water resilience and development. You have an opportunity to really save this gem for all of us. It's not just about living in Trinidad and West Haven. You are stewards of one of the jewels in the crown. There aren't many places like this. Places like Bellinas and Mendocino, they have preserved the quality of their lives by their water, uh, regulations. This clearly, um, you know, please, please, we, so many of us are begging you to take the right step right now, nip it in the bud. This is not about the water pipeline, this is about development. You're making a decision for the future, you can really influence the future right now by saying no. We're going to develop our systems. And so I, I urge you to do that for not just yourselves, but all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Okay.
Jack, I'm going to bring it back. I, I'd like to bring it back to the council at this point, for some reactions and comments from the, the general public and from our presentation, from our, uh, general manager of Humboldt Bay and our engineers and so forth. So let's just. I'm going to bring it back out, final public comment after that. So let's, I want to, I want to hear where the council is. And then we'll have one more session where, uh, the public can weigh in.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Point of order, I don't, I, I don't agree with bringing it back out after the council has had time to comment further. So that's, that would be my druther. I think we should stick to a process, public comment, bring it back to the council, motion to vote. This gets really ugly and really messy when we start opening it up back and forth. That's my opinion.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I agree with the comments just made. I've been waiting patiently to speak and I, I would appreciate the opportunity.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, I was under the assumption that we were, that we were out of speakers. Is this Steve Madron? I can't, I don't know your.
Yes, it is. I've been trying to get online for two hours. Like I said, your, your WebEx thing, uh, is horrible. And, uh, for whatever reason, Zoom works great. And I hear that you're going to be doing that in the next month or so, and that's great. Good for you guys. So anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is Supervisor Steve Madron. Uh, I am a resident of the Lufenholz watershed, lived here 45 years. Hydrologist, watershed management specialist. At any rate, uh, I do have a number of things to share with you. First of all, I very much appreciate all the comments on all sides. And I also very much appreciate the newcomers to our community. And for those who are new, let me just help explain something that's evolved here in our community. And that is the word stakeholder. You know, when we talk about stakeholders around the Trinidad area, I think many speakers have tried to portray that it's not just the residents that live in the town, but it's the whole community that comes to enjoy and to recreate in the area and appreciate the beauty. So there's that. And about 15 years ago, we started a watershed council to include all the stakeholders in the general area around Trinidad so that we could all come together and work on our problems and creating solutions. So when folks start talking about, well, wait, you're not in the city, you don't do, you know, we start dividing ourselves. And it's just a, a real slippery slope downhill when we start dividing ourselves that way. And, you know, one of those divisions is fire services. And I, I absolutely appreciate how folks are, um, very concerned about fire protection. And that comes in two forms. It comes with water supply and it comes with firefighters. And when you talk about water supply, it doesn't matter what your pipeline is. It's your water storage that provides you the backup for fire. And right now, with only 300,000 gallons, you don't have much, uh, storage to fight a fire for more than about three hours. So back in 2008, the study that was already commissioned, uh, talked about that and recommended adding a 500,000 gallon tank up there. 13 years later, that has not occurred. And, you know, that would make a dramatic difference in firefighting protection in the town of Trinidad, having that increased storage, along with the 105,000 gallon storage tanks I've recommended be put into backyards around Trinidad and West Haven with fire nozzles. So the water's right there where you need it to fight the fire. The other one is personnel, you've got to have firefighters. And right now, the city of Trinidad, all of its residents and all of the residents of the rancheria do not pay a dime for fire services, uh, in Trinidad. That's all paid for by people in the CSA four, the Community Service Area four that surrounds the city, but does not include the city. And it goes from Little River up to Big Lagoon or so. And, uh, West Haven Fire District or Fire Department is in that district, but cannot do an assessment. So West Haven gets nothing from that assessment. It all goes to CAL FIRE, CDF. And West Haven's been trying to survive on blackberry pies. And so what you have is a situation where all the people surrounding your town are paying for your fire services in town. The people in town, uh, yes, the city council provides a small amount of money to the fire station, but there's only a couple of folks left in that station. They're, they're older folks and the station does not respond to calls. They have not signed the mutual aid agreement, like West Haven, CDF and Arcade of Fire have all signed a mutual aid agreement, but Trinidad has not. So when you want to talk about equity and fairness and stuff, the residents of the city do not pay for any fire services or medical response at all in any way, shape or form. And really, we ought to all be paying for that. And then we'd have CDF, West Haven and a really vibrant fire services and medical services community. So, you know, stakeholders inside the city, outside the city, these are very tricky things to discuss. But my basic recommendation is to really, for all of us, to think that we all live in this community and we all have, uh, a lot at stake here. And for folks that have lived here a long time, we've heard this discussion many times. We've delved into the factual information and I'm going to share a little bit of that with you. First of all, you know, the 65, you know, Humboldt Bay Water District does have excess water when the pulp mills shut down. It's about 65 million gallons a day of excess water. And so the 100,000 gallons that the city and the rancheria might use would be point zero, zero, two or less than one, two hundredths of one percent of that 65 million gallons. So what we're doing has zero impact almost on that need to find other sources for use of that water. So that's one piece. The other thing is, um, you know, you can go online and Google what the flow of water would be with a certain size of a pipeline, uh, in gallons per minute, gallons per hour, gallons per day. The city on average has said in all the reports that, you know, the city uses about 80,000 gallons per day on average. And the rancheria is asking for 20,000 gallons per day for the full build-out of their hotel, mini mart, gas station, RV park. That's 100,000 gallons a day. Now, a two-inch pipeline will provide, you know, it varies based on the type of pipe, uh, the pressure involved, et cetera. But with just standard pressure, uh, a two-inch pipeline would deliver almost 200,000 gallons of water per day. That's twice what the city and the rancheria would need. That's a two-inch pipeline. Now, if there is water leaks in the line, which the city has, which causes pressure drop, you can move 300,000 gallons a day almost through a two-inch line. A four-inch line, which was discussed earlier, is the probable extension that might happen, although the analysis isn't done, would deliver up to 700,000 gallons a day with a, a solid line and almost, almost a million gallons a day with a, a leaky line. So those numbers, I would hope, would show you that even with a two-inch line, you would be getting double the capacity that you want to use. Or with a four-inch line, you'd be up at 700,000 gallons a day. Again, Trinidad and the rancheria, 100,000 gallons a day. So there's where your growth inducement comes in. Pipeline sizes have to be a certain size as a minimum and excess water can be moved through that and can eventually be provided to other customers down the road. Now, it's also true that right now, the last time these studies were done, uh, the city was looking at the whole cost. And it was mentioned earlier, well, you're not now, the rancheria would help. Well, the way these things work is usually you pay proportion of your use. So if you're using eight, 80,000 gallons or using 20,000 gallons, you're at 80% of cost. So 80% of feasibility analysis, 80% of any engineering and permitting, 80% cost of construction and 80% cost of operation and maintenance. So while that's less than 100%, it's still very, very significant. And I have to say that, you know, earlier tonight, when you had your first item, there is a real perception that there was a serial Brown Act violation with this tonight. And, and the mayor even stated that he had talked to other members, then sort of backpedaled to the point of saying, well, I only listened. But, you know, what that does is creates this perception for the public that it's hard to trust what's going on, you know, with those kinds of serial conversations. And hey, believe me, as a supervisor, I understand how difficult it is to try and do business when you can't talk to anybody but one other member of your board, you know, between meetings. And you're supposed to do it all at the meetings. And we do that so that we protect the public's trust and we do our business in front of the public, right? Also, I couldn't find any of the letters that have been submitted in tonight's packet. I went online, I've been downloading it. And I don't see the letters from Dave Hank and Ted Peace, Julie Fooker and all these other people. I know some of them came in late and you couldn't post them. But, you know, the fact that the council got them, that's great. But we as a public did not get the opportunity to really look at those things. So I'll be real quick here. And the last part I want to say is that no matter what source the city decides to use to supply itself with water, you need to do a bunch of things. And I know we're going to talk in more detail on the next item coming up. But you need to get your storage in, in gear, 500,000 gallons up top, maybe 105,000 gallon tanks around town. You need to fix the leaks. I mean, that's 20 to 40% of the water that's going away. And frankly, in a drought, the droughts we've had, if there wasn't 20 to 30% leaks, we would have never even had water conservation necessary because the water's there. We're just leaking it all over the place. And, um, we'll talk more about the springs on the next item in the West Haven Intertie. And I've got, I spent the last couple of weeks researching all kinds of grant sources. There's a ton of money out there for the city to apply for, to deal with its storage, its leak, its groundwater recharge. There's a ton of money out there for the city to apply for to deal with its storage, its leak, its groundwater recharge, and its water quality pieces. And so the last piece I'll say is that I do believe, and I've investigated it with factual and scientific approaches, that following the advice that I've given you would in fact lead to reduced rates for the city as well as seriously improved water resiliency for the community. So I know people are afraid, but really, you know, we've been through this a long time. We can work it out locally and improve our position. So anyway, thank you very much for the chance to make comment. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Madrone. Uh, here, the desire to stay with public comment. Uh, is there more that folks would like to contribute?
There was someone who wanted to come on. We need to hear your voice. I don't hear anybody.
This is Dorothy Cox. May I voice my mind please? Hi, I'd like to encourage the council to, um, work with Mr. Madrone, work with some of the other ideas we've had, to not consider the feasibility study. There's a lot of reasons. While I've been listening to this whole meeting, I've been reading each and every letter. There are some really good letters. There's some that are based solely on emotion, but there are some really great letters. Cindy Lindgren writes a great letter with a lot of good detail about why this is not a good idea. And, and hers was my favorite letter actually so far, on page twenty-five of the public comments. There's other, there's other options. Gail and I, Gail Kenny and I have been neighbors for many, many years. And I remember the same things that she spoke of. We have not had major issues. And I know the people that are new in town are worried about that, but we need to work with what we have. Put the money you would spend toward a feasibility study, put that money toward doing something with the, the resources we have now and ideas that we've reviewed in the past. Thank you very much. I'm back on mute.
All right, is there anyone else? Please make yourself, go ahead. Please name, say your name.
My name's Richard Walter. I live at five forty Northwest Haven Drive. And I have a comment to make. Um, so I'm a Trinidad water customer. And the, the line that runs down West Haven Drive, front, my, front, fronting my parcel and continue on to the city of Trinidad is existing line is a ten-inch line. And so the thought that you're going to install anything smaller than that to connect up to a ten-inch line is that's usually not what happens. Usually you have at least an equal-sized line or, or probably bigger. And given what Supervisor Madrone told you, and the amount of water you could force through a two-inch or a four-inch line. And so if you have a ten-inch line, that carries a much, much higher volume of water than a two or a four. And so there's going to be a lot of extra water available to develop surrounding properties. So I think that, uh, that's not a good situation. Uh, would only exacerbate the possibility of development all along West Haven and all the way to the Trinidad city limits. And there's a lot of properties, especially on the east side of West Haven Drive, that could be possibly subdivided and hooked up. And I think that it's a real poor idea to even consider, uh, doing this study. You guys should not participate in it. Thank you.
Hey, um, if anybody else has a comment, please make yourself known.
Are you taking comments?
Yes, we are. Deborah, did you have a comment?
Okay, can you hear me now? Yes?
Yes.
So my name is Deborah Fitzpatrick, and I have a home at nine two five Edwards. It's belonged to my family for over fifty years. And I love Trinidad. And it sounds to me like you're putting the cart before the horse. You have all kinds of issues that you could be dealing with and working with. And you want to join a feasibility study. And I think that word feasibility is important because it only means maybe yes, maybe no. But you've got a lot of data already about what's wrong and what you could fix. So I certainly support you not joining the feasibility study and keeping Trinidad for Trinidad. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Uh, Sherry Provo, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Yes, thank you so much, council. And I appreciate, want to say thank you to the council for having the public comment again because of the situation last meeting. And I, I just want to say thank you for that, to listen again. Um, and, you know, this is an important issue, as you all know. And to hear it again and to really give thought about it, you know, you know, I, I know this weighs on all of you. Um, I am a resident of, of West Haven, and I do own property in Trinidad. And I have been a, I've lived in Trinidad my whole life. And, um, and I just want to say that I think that one of the things that I think we're missing about, and we probably can get information about, is the environmental impact of the pipeline. We deal with lots of pipelines. Gas pipelines, pipelines, and this is a water pipeline. But there is going to be an impact on the environment and the beauty of our coastal area that we live. And I know that that, I don't know if that'll be in the feasibility study or not, but I know that it'll affect us in many ways that we cannot predict. And I want the Trinidad council right now to be bold. To be bold in its action, to sustain itself. And there are so many other options ahead of us. There's so many ways that we can have water. Catchment systems, reducing, looking at all the options, streams that are available. You know, I just want you to be bold in your actions tonight. Not rely on, you know, even though it's maybe a good system, you know, I don't know much about that system, but it might be a good system. We have to be self-sustainable as a community, as a family. You know, we need to take care of each other. And I think it's time to stand your ground and say, we are going to be innovative. We are going to look at how we can be sustainable as a community. This wonderful community that we all love and we've grown up in. And, um, thank you for, again, for letting us all speak to this important matter.
Okay, we, we had a little, uh, issue with, uh, our mayor having to, uh, get to another spot. So he's here trying to finish things up here. So, um, anybody else have a, would like to make a comment, or are we ready to move on?
I would like to make a comment.
And who are you? Who go ahead, please? All right. Would you try that again? We have, we can't hear you.
This is Adora King. Can you hear me?
Okay, Adora. We probably have to speak loudly. We're having a hard time hearing you. Maybe slowly.
Okay. Well, I had to get off the phone and get back on because I've been pushing my thumb off for five minutes, trying to push star six to get on, and it didn't work. So I'm on now. And first I would like to, I didn't want to bring it up, but I'd like to thank, um, Mr. Madrone for bringing up that, um, the Brown violation that occurred at the beginning of the meeting. Um, I know people make mistakes, but I am getting kind of tired of councilmen, not kind of tired. I'm tired of council people getting together, and I'm going to come right out and say it. It seems to always be Tom Davies that's not included in these meetings. And, um, you know, I appreciate everything that all of you do, and I thank you. But I would really ask you to watch that because it's not necessary and it's not proper. Now, what I really want to say about the meeting, I know that this topic is about whether or not we want to participate in the study. And people want to say, oh, come on, you know, just throw a few bucks out there and, and participate in the study. Why are you keeping your head in the sand and you don't want the knowledge? I don't think that's true for any of us, that we don't want the knowledge. It's just, why would I go down and drive a truck if I didn't want to own a truck? And I think it's more about, we don't want to change and go on to a commercial or a municipal water line. So it's not just that we're keeping our head in, saying that we're not being intelligent about this. We don't want to, we don't want to try on something that we don't want to buy. So, you know, I, I think we ought to give us all a little more credit than that. And then I would like to ask the person from the Municipal Water District, this is a very elementary question, if you're still there. Am I correct in thinking that this water pipe does not belong to Trinidad? It belongs to the Water District. The water that flows through it does not belong to Trinidad. It belongs to the Water District. We're just a renter on the pipe. We're just somebody that we're going to help the Water District pay for the pipe to get here, and we're going to be a renter to use what goes through it. What happens to that water and, and any other connect-ons to that pipe are no different than what's already happened at this point. We're just a new customer coming along and connecting on. So when they talk about the size of the pipe and the water flow, I don't think we're going to have any control over that because we're just a renter. It's not our business. And if you own the pipe and you own the water, and somebody else wanted to come along and buy like we want to buy, are they going to say no to all those people? So when people say, oh, no, there won't be any development, are you kidding? So am I wrong in my assumption that we're just a renter?
Well, you're not a renter. Typically, the way a water system works, and, and I'm sure this is the case inside the city limits, um, the water company, um, in our case, it would be our one district, in your case, it would be the city, provides water and infrastructure up to the individual consumer's meter. And that, um, Water District or, or city pays for maintenance of the entire system up to that point. And then from the meter to the resident's house or business or what have you, it's the responsibility of that, um, customer to pay for the lateral line, all of the pipes under your house and your business and whatnot. So I'm not real sure where the renting of the pipe comes into this, this discussion. That's customarily how a water system works.
Okay, thank you. It was a little difficult to hear you, but I, I got the gist of what you said. Thank you very much.
All right, we, um, uh, do we have anyone else who would like to speak up? Uh, we're ready to move on. Please make yourself known.
Hello, this is, uh, Gail Sherman. Can I make a comment?
Please do.
Hi, um, I, I just wanted to say, I'm so grateful, we should all feel so grateful to have Supervisor Steve Madrone as, uh, in our community. He's so knowledgeable, and we should take advantage of his, all of his information and go that way first rather than, um, go with a feasibility study, um, for this water line. I think he has a lot of valuable information to offer, and that's what I think the council should do, and we should go in that way. There's, what is the rush? Why do we need to hurry and make a decision? We can always, it seems to me, we could go the route of the feasibility study at, at some other time if we don't, uh, have to, you know, have, look at what Steve Madrone is offering and go with his recommendations first. That would seem to me would make a lot of sense. Um, I live here with my husband on Rayipa Lane in Trinidad. Um, and we were fortunate enough to, to buy a home here, uh, back in twenty thirteen after having first come here twenty years ago for our honeymoon and then coming every year. We discovered this beautiful gem, and like so many of you in your, this community, we, we want, we just fell in love with this area. It's just beautiful. It is a beautiful area. And I think, um, the council, as was mentioned earlier, uh, does have the responsibility to be stewards of this land and to protect it, not only for people of the city of Trinidad proper, but for all of us who live in the area and those who've come to visit. It's just so unique and so beautiful, and I hope we can, um, we can just keep it that way, small and quiet and, and beautiful as it is. And thank you for having this meeting and have, letting us all have a part in it. Thank you very much.
All right, um, thank you. Do we have anyone else? Looks like we're ready to move on. I thank everybody for speaking. I know how important this is, and I'm going to let our mayor take over.
Uh, thank you, Jack. Um, and I, again, folks, I really, uh, I hate having such technical difficulties. But at this point, I'd like to go around and have each of the councillors weigh in with their thoughts. And then after all five of us have spoken, entertain a motion. So let's start with Mr. Klopitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a few comments, if I can. Is there feedback, or can you hear me okay?
You're doing fine.
Okay, thank you. So no doubt that the city of Trinidad needs to fix the leaky pipes and needs to create a larger storage. I think it's long overdue that those benefits are used by the city. But neither of those issues increase the supply of water with the potential for more serious forms of drought. The city needs to look at multiple options. And those options may include the Humboldt Bay Water District and may also include Steve Madrone's concepts. You're going to have to do some type of study with Steve Madrone's concepts, whether it's digging ponds on private land, organic aquifers. You're going to have to put money toward that study that may take a while to do. So because this is probably a ten-year plan to make the city more water-resistant, and nothing happens overnight, in my estimation, you need to look at multiple options to gather data. I don't feel that there's any downside in gaining information because if you do the feasibility study, you may learn that's not the direction you want to go. But you still have to look at both. It, it's like being, uh, having a physical problem. As a healthcare provider, I have a patient that comes to me with a problem, but they don't want to have a test done because that would tell them that's the problem, that's the answer, that would give a diagnosis. So in my experience, having more information allows you to make an educated decision that has a long implication for the city. And I understand the concern for growth, but I still feel that having more information is a better way to solve a problem than having less information. Hiding from that, to me, is just an issue. So, um, I'm hoping that the council will support gaining more information so that the public can be involved and can understand what our options are. And once we know what the options are, we can make an educated decision. But the feasibility study with Humboldt Bay does not eliminate the opportunity to do a feasibility study with Supervisor Steve Madrone's concepts. It does not prevent us from fixing leaks and doesn't prevent us from getting a larger storage tank. I think we need to do all of those things to make sure that we're making the right decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Davies.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your comments, Richard. I am still not convinced this is the best thing to do for the city of Trinidad. Um, I did not hear that future annexation would not be encouraged by having an increased water supply, which would lead to development. Um, I've heard from people, multiple people on this call about the size of the water lines and what could possibly happen. Um, I know that I'm going to be, you know, some people in the audience put that down as a, as a fear-based decision. But I, I really don't think it's a fear-based decision. I mean, this is how development happens all over the country. Water is put somewhere, development follows. Look at Los Angeles, California. Water has been brought in and ruined communities for the development of a larger community to the south. Our sphere of influence could be expanded by this annexation, driven by the fact that there's more water available?
Play up the mic out there somewhere else. Is this too loud? Is this too loud for you?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, please mute yourself, seven oh seven six, ending in three one. Go ahead, Tom.
I, I do believe we have a responsibility to the greater community as Dave Hank and. brought out, you know, to bring a pipeline to our area. What does that do to the other places? And I know maybe a feasibility study would do that. I still have not heard anything close to an estimation other than $5,000. And I'm sorry, but later on tonight, we're talking about a $40,000 study of a few intersections in town. You know, that's, I don't think that the figures we're hearing are anywhere close to what could happen. I'm just, I'm just not in favor of this. I just, I see, I see a lot of, I see people that are proposing it or saying it's a good idea, our contractors, engineers, planning firms. They all make money from projects like this. We do not have an in-house engineer and finance planner. The more projects that are proposed, the more income potential for other entities. And the, and the city is paying for this stuff. And so that's been my viewpoint all along on a number of projects in town. It's still my viewpoint. So, I'm prepared for a motion. I know you've said that you wanted to hear from everybody. But I've been reading up on how meetings can go and you don't have to wait for everybody. Usually you can make a motion and then discuss it later. So, that is the way things can happen in a city council meeting. I don't think I could be directed to not make a motion. Maybe the, the lawyer has just appeared. Is that something he would like to weigh in on, please?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Davies. Now, my only recommendation to the council is there has been some concern about communication between three council members prior to tonight's meeting. It, I believe it worthwhile for those council members to provide any details that may be pertinent to this determination, make that publicly known. And assuming that there was no consensus reached between those three council members during that conversation, I'll provide that assurance before we take action on this item tonight. So, point of procedural order and recommendation.
And really, Tom, it was, it was more just a, an ask. Of course, anyone can make a motion. I'm just asking that all councillors have the ability to speak their mind freely first and then move on a motion. So it's merely a request. Not a, or sorry, it's merely a, an ask, not a requirement.
Thank you. Um, and I, and I will, I will honor your request tonight, but I just heard their attorney make a, an advice, he gave some advice. So I'm going to yield the rest of my time. Maybe people would like to speak to the advice he just gave. And I don't have any more comments. Thank you.
Uh, let me just to speak to that. And I definitely, uh, I brought it up because I wanted it to be out in the open and not find out later. And so I, I respect the Brown Act as much, if not more than the next. And my, anytime I speak with council members, I listen because we don't get into specifics about items that I know will end up on agendas. I, I appreciate that people have their right to an opinion about the perception. And I just ask that folks look at what actually happens instead of what could be happening. So I just say that, that's my involvement. I'll let council members, Klopis and West speak for themselves. Uh, Mr. Grover, though, in the meantime, if you don't mind, we'll just work our way through that.
We'll get back on that. And, uh, you know, I, I'm still of the opinion too, that we can supply our own water and fix up our own systems. But I, I want a comparative analysis done so we can show how much better it is for us to do it ourselves. And that, that's, I, I specifically went to school to learn environmental science and policy to be able to do things like that, make it happen. And I appreciate that people want to get this going, but I still don't see a plan for this water catchment. And I think this might, you know, get our, get ourselves going too. Because it's obviously a major concern to people, but as somebody, you know, like to try to make my decisions on science and objectively as possible, I, I just can't bring myself to, to say I don't want any more knowledge of this, especially up to date, because apparently there was a study 12 years ago. And I don't see what development occurred from that study happening. So I, I don't, you know, I'm sure it happens a lot. I don't think people just made all this up, but it, I, I don't want to feel like I'm cornered just because I want to know more. So that's where I'm coming from and I will probably stick with the same vote I had last time.
All right, Mr. West?
I have a, I had a suggestion that I, I talked to, that I've talked about before. But it is more of a, a consideration of an alternative. But I really would like to have, and now we have another discussion item coming between that, but I'd really like to be able to offer this. So I'm just going to say it now, even though it's really an alternative. Part of my feelings is that we have a, this, this, what we're talking about now has been really difficult to think about for the last few weeks because we're making a decision that's the future of Trinidad. If we make a mistake in the water supply, I think people are going to be coming back and saying, why did we not consider everything? And as if we get it, if the creek gets too low and we can't get water, I think you're going to be really upset that we made this decision. However, I also agree that it could be a problem. So one of the ideas I had is that, and that's what I talked about before, John, was to say, what about taking the largest portion of the amount of money spent to get water to, across, is to get water across the river. But not to open a pipe to Trinidad, but just get it to the rancheria and get a bigger pipe and have an agreement where we could say later, we can tap in if we absolutely come to the point where we absolutely need that water. It seemed like we would not open up the, to development, but we'd have the water at our, close by, but we would not put the pipes in. We would not put any pipes to the tanks. We wouldn't put anything else in. And then what we would have left is an opportunity to, to not have to do the whole project, because the biggest part of this project is to get that water across the river. And we have to put in another pipe later. It's going to cost a fortune. And that's why we don't want to make, come back later and have to go back through this again. So I don't want water coming all the way through. So I, I will vote, I, I will vote no to this project as is. But I would like to think about the possibility of doing a smaller feasibility study that would just allow us to open up a bigger pipe that we could sign in, we could work on a, agree with the rancheria so it would stop there and we could open it up later if we really felt that the Trinidad, that we needed more water for Trinidad and it became a, a bigger issue that we didn't think the creek would hold up. That would keep the water flowing, but it wouldn't take it into Trinidad and it would not open up. But that's an alternative. The reason I'm bringing up now is because I think I'm going to lose John after this and then we have another idea. So maybe I could ask John, going back to this again, John, is that even a possibility to do a feasibility study? And just have it stop at the rancheria, but have it open later for us to be able to get to if we needed it?
Sure, it's, it's possible to have a pipeline that you were, what you're proposing is have a T at the end of the line. The T would go off to the rancheria. And there would be one end of the T that would be capped and, you know, potentially accessible by the city of Trinidad. Still would require you to participate in the feasibility study to figure out what size that's going to be. So.
But would that, would that also cost far less because we would not be looking at any, any piping or any, any piping beyond that point? Would it be a far less expense?
I would think so.
All right, well, that, I think we'll come back to that as a, because I'm getting ahead of myself. This should be coming up number three, but I just appreciate that she's saying that we, that would be a possibility. So, uh, thank you. And I said.
So I'll just finish. Actually, I'd like to hear from Richard if you want to respond to our city attorney's what is it, recommendation to address the possible Brown Act.
Sure, be happy to. I physically called the mayor to express a problem because of a connection and asked if he would request that we revisit this because of technology. I lived down this, down the street from, from Dave. And he came to visit me. I did not ask him to change a vote. I did not, did not bring up the topic at all to talk about it as a discussion factor because I wanted to respect it. We did talk about other things, but none to come up about the vote to change concerning this particular issue. I already recognized that Dave voted to support it. So there wasn't anything I needed to talk to him about on that issue. It was more about the Van McTrill and other items that I would like to have opened up for the city. And thank you.
All right. Um, I'm just going to make mine brief just because, um, just because of the time. I still believe that Trinidad needs to live within its means. And so I appreciate everybody's input and I will stay with my interest in investing what limited resources we do have as a city into our existing infrastructure. So at that point, at this point rather, I am entertaining a motion from the council. Mr. Davies?
I move to not participate in the feasibility study for bringing water from Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District to Trinidad.
We have a first? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a first and we have a second. At this point, do we have any discussion? All right, Gabe, if you can do a roll call vote, I would appreciate that, if you were clear about how that works.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, so the motion on the table, please help me. It was made by Councilmember Davies and seconded by?
West.
Councilmember West. The motion to not participate in the feasibility study to bring water to Trinidad. And the roll call vote, Councilmember Grover?
No.
Uh, Councilmember Klopis?
No.
Councilmember West?
Yes.
Councilmember Davies?
Yes.
And Mayor Ladwick?
Yes.
So that is three yeses and two nos. For the motion, carry.
All right, thank you very much. I know this was a difficult process to have to do twice. I still respect the process and I'm grateful for everyone's participation in said process. And I, I, right now, I'm actually not feeling comfortable staying in the West House just because. And so I'm going to ask Councilman West if you can continue the meeting.
You want to try and get another?
I just, I'm out of devices. I am literally out of.
Sorry to interrupt, for clarity. There's certainly no violation for the mayor to remain with Mr. West unless there's some other reason for which he needs to.
Uh, you know, it's mostly just that I didn't bring my mask. I was running out of options and I think that they have another computer and they're going to stick me in the garage.
I, I'm going to put him in the backyard by the hot tub, so he'll be a little cold. Anyway, I'm going to try to set him up. I'll let him run the meeting and I'll try to get a computer set up.
Oh, God, I can't wait for COVID to be over. All right, so we are moving on to item number 11. Uh, oh, well, there you go. I've got a mask. Item number 11, which is discussion, decision to expand composition of the Trails Advisory Committee to include a representative of or from the Chirai Ancestral Society. Who shall take this over? Either Tom or Eli? I'm not sure who's, who's got the preamble for this.
Yeah, I, I can get started with it. And, and actually, we'll, that's why we have Russ here, so he could weigh in on it. A letter was received last Thursday, the same day that we had a planning commission meeting. And the letter was sent to our attorney, Russ Gans, by the attorney for the Chirai and, who's Paul Gallegos. And in that letter, it expressed several different things about agenda items that were on the planning commission meeting that evening, including the general plan and also Trails Report. And the gist of the letter was they also indicated that the Chirai do not have a representative on the Trails Committee and that there are representatives by the Uroch tribe and also by the Trinidad Rancheria in addition to other community members that are a part of the Trails Committee. And in talking with our city attorney, we felt that, you know, it would be logical to go ahead and offer that the Trails Committee have a representative of the Chirai Ancestral Society. Part of the reason that I was thinking that it would make sense is that, uh, of course, you know, Trinidad was originally, the Chirai lived here in Trinidad. And as a result, there's a lot of historical significance in the city, cultural resources in the city. And whenever you're making decisions, it's, I feel it's always helpful to have various parties and various interests expressed as you're forming the plans and ideas and thoughts and so on, rather than coming to a point where, you know, ideas and thoughts and, and plans are made and then later on receiving input from a party that's interested. So I felt that it would make sense to have the Chirai involved in, and Russ Gans had indicated basically, why don't we just put it on the agenda? So I'll turn this over to Russ and then he could weigh in because the letter was addressed to him.
Uh, yes, that, that is a substantive ask that was included in the letter in essence that the Chirai Ancestral Society be actually placed on the Trails Committee, not to participate in that. As a councillor is aware, there is pending litigation with the Chirai Ancestral Society and others. Of course, in any communications with the Ancestral Society, a no discussion of litigation should take place nor issues germane to the litigation. To the extent this is an advisory committee and these are policy issues considered on the Trails Committee, certainly within the council's discretion to include them by motion on that committee if the council.
This is a, are you ready for us to talk? Because this is a no-brainer for me pretty much. Uh, I'd like to hear from Councilmember Davies though, because I feel like he's got a lot more knowledge of our Trail System here and, and the politics behind it.
Uh, thanks. I do have knowledge of the Trail System. I'm not going to talk about any politics behind the Trail System because the Trails Committee should be an apolitical group, talking about maintenance, et cetera. This was brought up at a previous meeting. I've already made my position clear as to how I believe this should, you know, the membership of this. And, but also thanks for your question because I think discussing the, the meaningful, the meaningfulness of the, of the committee and the purpose of the committee, I believe should be revisited in the future.
All right, other input on this agenda item from folks on the council or city staff? All right, seeing none at this point, can we open up the public comment?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Bryce Kenny, still at 462 Avenue, 462 Ocean Avenue, Trinidad. You, you got to take a look at the mission and vision statement for the Trails Committee. And you'll find that it says that the mission is preservation, maintenance, and expansion of the Trail System throughout the city. And the TAS is on record as being in favor of eliminating trails from the Trail System. So their expressed viewpoint goes exactly opposite of the mission and vision statement for the committee, which to me makes it a non-starter. the mission and vision statement for the committee, which to me makes it a non-starter. So they should be respectfully, um, declined to become a member of the committee. They of course can participate in the public meetings and express any viewpoints that they would like, but, uh, actually being a member of the committee would be incredibly inappropriate in my opinion.
All right. Uh, thank you for that comment. Um, other folks from the community that wish to, uh, make comments? Uh, Ms. Provault?
Thank you, um, council. This hits home really hard for us as Yurok people. Your, your city is on Yurok land. And specifically, the Chirai village. How can you not have a representative from the Chirai Village sitting on the Trails Committee? They know this land better than any of us, any of you. And it is disrespectful to even consider not to invite them to the Trails Committee. They could be able to provide valuable insight to the ways that we traveled as native people, how to respect the land that you inhibit. I am told that you have not considered that they should be a part of the Trails Committee from the very onset. It is the protection of the places that we live. Invasive species are pathways to make sure that they're safe and secure and that they don't violate our cultural resources. Please consider their recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Provault. Other, uh, input from our community? All right. See, let me do one more scan of the next page. Seeing none. Bring it back to the council. Go ahead, Mr. Columbus.
Yes, I, I do have a question. I, I noticed that we have a representative from the Uroch Tribe. And what I'm trying to understand is if uh, the Chirai are part of the Uroch Tribe, does the Uroch Tribe represent them and their interests on this particular committee? Is there someone that can help me understand?
Uh, Ms. Provault, I would, uh, ask that you weigh in if you, um, have direct response to that. There you are. You're on mute, Cherry.
Thanks. And I do invite the Chirai Ancestral Society to speak. Uh, my village comes from Choppak, which is in Stone Lagoon. And even though it's in Yurok ancestral soci- um, territory, Yurok Tribe supports my village and supports my ceremonies and supports the way that I feel like that the path should go. But the Chirai Ancestral Society and the people of the Chirai Village come from this area and they know the past. They know that, uh, the way of life and what should be sensitive. Even, they are proud Yurok members like we all are, like I am. But that doesn't mean that I know about their village and their pathways and their trails. I may know about Choppak, where I come from and my village. And I, I know that the Yurok Tribe respects the Choppak Village and what I need to say about them. Just because they're in Aboriginal territory, the Yurok people, does not mean, um, that we not encourage and respect the voice of the Chirai, the village, the village of Chirai and their voice. So even though they're village members of the Chirai, we are still, they're Yurok people, but it's still the village. The village is all of the Trinidad area. Um, so I hope you heard me. I think I'm breaking up a little bit. Um, but I would encourage the Chirai Ancestral Society there to voice their concern. But that's how I feel as a member of the Choppak Village, which is in Stone Lagoon. Um, we are territory. The Yurok Tribe respects the way that I want my village to be in care of. Okay, this made sense. Thank you.
If I could just follow up, Cherry, again, help me understand. Is it more appropriate then to have a TAS member than a Yurok Tribe member? Or are you saying it's appropriate to have both? Again, educate me, help me understand.
Thank you so much, Richard, for your, um, question. And I would say it's important to have both because this is all Aboriginal territory. Our Aboriginal territory goes from Little River all the way up to Damnation Peak, which is north of, um, we have 18 villages just in the Yurok District, Yurok and Trinidad Village, uh, area that I represent. Um, so there's many villages from Moonstone all the way up to, uh, Tamet. 18 unique villages. Um, and they all have representative and leader. Um, because they're Yurok territory, the villages still had a leader and could be able to work together with other villages. So I do think, Richard, your question is, um, should it be one or the other? It should be both. Because this is Aboriginal Yurok territory, but specifically the village of, um, Chirai. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council or comments?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead, David.
That we expand the Trails Advisory Committee to include a member of the Chirai Ancestral Society.
I will second that. So at this point, we have a motion and a second. Gabe, can you do a roll call vote?
Yes. Um, so the motion, uh, Grover, seconded by Mayor Ladwig to include a member from the Chirai Ancestral Society, uh, through the Trinidad Trails Committee. Um, I have a quick question as far as, um, just procedure goes, real quick before we do a roll call. Is this to amend the resolution? Is that technically what we're doing? Cause there's a resolution that describes the function and the makeup and the structure of the Trails Committee. So when I'm finishing up the details of this motion, I just wanna make that part of the motion if indeed that's the case and possibly even bring that mo- uh, resolution back to a future council meeting on the consent agenda just so it's transparent and everyone can see, uh, you know, the changes made. Is that, am I, am I on the right track there?
That was my understanding.
Okay, good. So, uh, with that said, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Um, let's start with, uh, Councilmember Grove.
Yes.
Uh, Columbus?
After listening to Cherry Provault, I'm gonna vote yes.
Uh, Councilmember West?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Davies?
No.
And, uh, Mayor Ladwig?
Yes.
So that would be four yeses, one no. Councilmember Davies, the dissenting vote, uh, motion carries.
Thank you for that, uh, Mr. City Clerk. I got it. Mr. Adams. Uh, moving on now to, uh, let's see, item number three, consider alternative options for additional water, city water supply, feasibility analysis of alternatives. Um, I'm not sure exactly who is gonna, uh, intro this. Is it our planner or is it city manager?
Okay, I, I guess I'll get it started and then I'll turn it over to our planner. Um, so basically, uh, this item was put in here either to supplement the prior one with the feasibility analysis where we could have looked at Humboldt Bay Water as one option and then look here at other options. Uh, some of them suggested by, uh, Supervisor Steve Madron. Uh, in addition to that, and I sort of gathered from what Jack West had mentioned, um, it seemed like he was indicating that, uh, he didn't wanna have this full-blown feasibility study, but he liked the T concept. So that always could be a part of this. Um, so basically what we're getting at is to try to find solutions for our water system, which, uh, number one would entail the city water supply, meaning we currently get water from Luffenhold's Creek. And then we could also look at Milk Creek. We could look at Humboldt Bay water as far as the T connection. We could look at the, uh, springs up, up, off of, uh, Blue Diamond, uh, or, or Green Diamond, I'm sorry, Green Diamond property. And, uh, and then of course we could look at, uh, the storage tanks and we can look at improving our water, uh, distribution. Um, so anyway, all of these things need to be looked at. And, and one of the key unknown factors that we do have is really climate change. Uh, we do not know because we've had a bunch of studies that, uh, our Water Committee and Richard Columbus had put together that over the years, you could see all of the studies we've had. But, uh, the, the one real unknown is really what will climate change do? Um, just this past year, when you do look at Luffenhold's Creek flow, imagine we're going through the winter, through spring, and all of a sudden we reach, uh, June 1st. And at June 1st, the flow in the Luffenhold's Creek is 3.150. Okay, so 3.1, let's say. That's June 1st. Once we get to July 1st, it's dropped down to 1.3. And then by July 16th, so 15th, the middle of the month, that's a month and a half after June 1st, it's down below 1.98. And then from July 15th all the way through until we get through November until December, we're running below 1.0. And, and as a result this year, we had to report to Fish and Wildlife uh, because we got below the number that they needed. And then it kept on going. So really for that four-month period, it really had the city on edge and it had staff on edge. Uh, it, it's, it's something that we would prefer not to have to face. We, 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 we need to have something that could be more reliable. Um, certainly, uh, you know, a creek, you know, is, is not, I think, sufficient to rely on. So as a result, you know, possibly looking at Milk Creek, looking at the springs and possibly that T connection where, as Jack West had indicated when he was talking with, um, John Friedenbach from the Humboldt Bay Water. In other words, just to have that water connection ready just in case we may need it in the future. And, and part of the reason, uh, that something, you know, needs to be addressed is, I know timing was asked about before. You know, why are we bringing this up now? Well, part of the timing is since the Rancheria is looking at bringing in water, we could get it at a much cheaper cost. Otherwise in the future, we would have to go ahead and pay for it all the way up from Little River. Um, so that's what, one consideration for that. Then looking at the other considerations, uh, like Milk Creek, how much can we generate? All of these could be dealing with a feasibility study or multiple feasibility studies to look at the greater, uh, view of what else can we do to supplement Luffenhold's Creek? And, and hopefully between springs and then possibly trying to find a solution for the whole community, meaning West Haven, uh, you know, that, that actually would help serve the, the greater, um, area. Uh, but either way, we, we need to look at some other options and this agenda item will help us look that way. Now, I know this has been talked about considerably on the Planning Commission level and as part of the general plan discussion. And also the numerous studies we've had during the past year and a half, looking at water through GHD and at the same time, uh, looking at the drought shortage contingency plan. Um, so I'll turn it over to Trevor, our city planner, and have her weigh in. And then I don't know if, uh, GHD would wanna weigh in also. Uh, but as a small city, uh, we have to work with, uh, consultants and because we can't afford to have a dedicated staff person for each of these, uh, solutions. So, so in the long run, uh, you know, we, we're getting really good expert advice and hopefully we can help make the right decision that, uh, will make sure that we have a, uh, a reliable, um, water options for the future. So I'll turn it over to Trevor.
And actually. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so there was another part to this agenda item that was not addressed at all, the second part. I did hear, we've already decided not to do a feasibility study. So I'm, I'm sorry if I sound a little agitated right now. It sounded like we just got another hard sell for a feasibility study from the city manager. I am not pleased with that kind of a presentation. We skipped over the second part of this agenda item, which is what I have, I have put in. And I propose that we form a water resiliency committee because it's my understanding the former Water Committee, the Water Committee that's out there now, Richard Jack, is to address uh, drought policy, water rationing type policy. Seems like that's been done. My idea is to take two council members, two planning commission members, invite Steve Madron to be on this committee as well, since we're gonna be discussing many of his ideas. Make a resolution with this committee's tasks, a timeframe for the committee to last and Brown Act requirements so that the public can attend these meetings as well so that we can get input from everyone. That was left out of the packet. That was very clearly presented by me when I wanted this agenda item put into the packet. So I'm sorry, but I'm a little put off. Changed the presentation and wasn't even brought up in the, in the, um, in the inter, in the bringing the agenda item up. So that's the other part of the, the, uh, discussion tonight.
Yeah, Tom, I, I do wanna weigh in. I, you know, I'm sorry. I, I think the, the point that you made makes sense that, uh, you know, you wanna look at the big picture in that respect. Uh, the reason I did it that way is I have them identified as, uh, uh, item number one and item number two under here. And, and I was trying to get through item number one while we still had the consultants. And then I was gonna get into the item two with the, uh, either, you know, revising the current Water Committee and giving it the agenda where they're dealing with water resiliency or creating a new committee. Uh, but yeah, I was trying to separate the two because I felt it would be easier to talk about those two options separately than sort of like mixing them all together.
Thank you for that. I think they both should have been put out at once. It would have taken an extra couple of minutes. All I would have needed to do is clarify what I had intended and we could have moved on.
Okay, and I'll turn it over to Trevor and she could weigh in also and then go from there.
Good evening again. Um, so I wasn't actually prepared to talk about this item. I didn't realize, um, I, I would be, just sort of stayed on out of curiosity and, and interest. Um, but I, I will say, um, yes, we have been talking about this a lot at the Planning Commission level. And if you recall, when we first started looking at the drought contingency plan, we started looking at a variety of, of options for the city to increase, um, resiliency in, in its supply. And, um, we did present sort of a, an outline of a, of a potential water planning process um, to the city council. I believe that was in, um, June of, of last year. And I, I think that the city should be looking into as many options as, as it can. Um, you know, some of it's going to have to be grant funded. We're gonna have to look for grants. I know, um, Becky and, and GHD are, are looking at a, a state revolving, um, fund, loan fund, um, money and some USDA funds. Um, I, I and Becky, we, we applied for, uh, a technical assistance grant for some water resiliency plan. planning. So yes, I support the city looking at, and both short and long term, because like Eli said, you know, a large infrastructure, whether, a project, whether it's a pipeline, or whether it's large catchment ponds, or whether it's changing the water system from a surface intake to a spring intake, those are all, you know, long-term projects, it's going to take years and years to go through all the studies, and the environmental analysis, and the permitting that would be needed for those, and there's things that you can look at in the short term, too, a couple of things that we talked about where, for example, we're a new summer intake system, so a slightly different intake system that would be more efficient at drawing out water during low flows, looking at rainwater catchment, reducing water loss in the lines, and increasing storage, those are kind of some of the obvious solutions. So yeah, and I think the idea of a committee to sort of spearhead looking at all these various options, and how to proceed with them, is a good idea, and I think that the city should proceed with that sooner rather than later.
Any questions or comments for Trevor from the council?
All right, I'm going to open it up for public.
Yes, Steve, if, I was just going to interject before, I'm not sure if Rebecca Crowe is still on from GHD, if she has anything else to add, if not, then we could go to the public. So I don't know, Rebecca, are you still on? Okay, she might be off. Okay, go ahead.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I just wanted to add that I certainly agree with Tom, and I wanted to add a couple of things. One of the things I don't think you mentioned is also making sure we get a good amount of money to, from the city, that I think we ought to do that, too, is to make sure we have funding for a study that we can count on, that would come from the city, and also I'd like to see West Haven as part of this committee as well, because we're going to be working on a lot of the same land, that's my idea. And I want to just go back to my other idea, I did think that the idea of bringing water only over to the end of the pipe might be a safety concern later, if we really ran out of water, and I don't think it would affect growth, so just as a suggestion to add to what we might be looking at. That's it, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Supervisor Madron again. Again, very rich discussion tonight, and thank you all for your dedication, three and a half hours into it here. You're starting to look like the Board of Supervisors. Are you going to go all night? We sometimes go forever. At any rate, I'll be quick. I just wanted to respond to a couple of things, offer a few things. One, the idea of bringing a T or a stub line somewhere nearby, sounds great, you know, it sounds simple, it's just a pipeline, but in fact, it would need to be a pipeline, a pump station, chlorine stations, et cetera. You don't just come in and add those later, they need to be part of the system. And so, you know, earlier, there was a lot of comments about how folks just really want the information, why wouldn't we want to study this and get the information? And frankly, I believe that everything's there except for updating the costs, you know, and the fact that the rancheria wants to be a 20% partner potentially. Those are new elements, but everything else has been looked at, and maybe, you know, looking at it again, it'll create some different things, but you voted not to do that. But just real quickly, in your 2008 report, on page 22, it says, extend the McKinneyville Service District Transmission Main to Lufenholdts Plant, because the water would come from Mad River through McKinneyville, then up to Trinidad, and talks about the things that would need to happen, including a new pump station, new booster stations, new chlorine stations, and those are the reasons that it went from a $1.2 million estimate in 2001 to over $5 million in 2008. It was the addition of these pump stations and chlorine stations and the rest of it. And stubbing off the line doesn't really save that much, certainly it saves something, but the lines for that last mile or so are a very small portion of the overall cost, if you can imagine a four-and-a-half-mile pipeline, the environmental permitting, going through wetlands, all kinds of issues and stuff, and certainly would take many, many years, including going through Laffco and everything else. So I want to applaud you for sticking with your earlier decision and doubling down on working towards being a model city. I think that's exactly what Trinidad is positioned to do, is to show the rest of the state and other coastal towns how you live within your means, and sustain yourself like Native American peoples did for thousands of years here, living within the means of the area they lived. So we can take a lot of lessons from that, but in that same report, it goes on to talk about, you know, this basic project of connecting to Humboldt Bay Water District, over $5 million estimate in 2008. So what a new study would tell you is that that price has gone up, how much is, you know, to be determined, but we're not going that way, thank goodness. And underneath the cost estimate in that plan on page 25, it has advantages and disadvantages, and it lists, it says, in quotes, "The advantages and disadvantages of this alternative connecting to the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District are presented in this table above. This alternative has many disadvantages that make this alternative less favorable to implement than simply upgrading the Lufenholdts system," which is ultimately what the city chose to do in 2008, after they got this report that said, "The best thing to do is keep investing in Lufenholdts and improving water quality and all the other things." So I just wanted to share that with you, because it's basically stated in your own report. So when people say, "We want information," and you hear people saying, "We don't want you to do this," it's because most of us realize this information's already been generated and paid for, and it was paid for by the city the last time, not by the Water District or other consultants. So there's that, but, you know, no matter which source ultimately the city uses, you have to increase your storage. So I spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks, calling up state and federal agencies to find out what sources of funds are out there. I'll start with storage. The 500,000-gallon storage tank, a steel tank, which was recommended in the 2008 report, was estimated back then to cost about $1 million. And as it turns out, there is a grant program that's been around for a while, and it's been reinvigorated recently, and it comes down from EPA, and it comes to the California Office of Emergency Services, or OES, and it's the Fire Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And as we speak, GHD, your consultant, has been working with the McKinneyville Community Service District to write a grant to get them, I believe, a 500,000-gallon tank, it may be a 1 million-gallon tank, but it's at least a 500,000, and to possibly eventually get some funding to restore their old redwood tanks like the city has, they're only 120,000 gallons, the cities are 150. At any rate, so there's grant monies out there to do that, and GHD is in the middle of writing grants for the Service District to do exactly that. So here we are 13 years later, and it hasn't been done. And, you know, tonight, you've got this agenda item, I would hope you might take action tonight, or take, Tom, your Councilmember Davies' suggestion to set up the committee, and rapidly come up with recommendations and direct staff to start writing these grants while the money's out there to help the city accomplish all of this. Leaks are the same way, or let me stay with storage for a second, the 500,000-gallon steel tank would be up at the current storage area above town, which is gravity flow down to town, but you can also put 100 tanks around West Haven and Trinidad that were 5,000-gallon tanks, adding another half-million gallons of storage to the community for fire protection with fire nozzles right at the houses. And there are grants through OES for that, as well as possibly the North Coast Resource Partnership. The next item is leaks. Yes, we know we have a lot of leaks, and frankly, you know, you're losing 20% on average, so you're losing 15,000 to 20,000 gallons a day through your leaks. So it's always been that that needs to be taken care of, and it's been hard to get that money, but you got really close recently with the North Coast Resource Partnership Grant, which you could resubmit to, they have funding for these kinds of things, and you got close, you were on the contingency list, didn't quite make the cut. There's also the Wildlife Conservation Board that has a stream flow enhancement program that would fit this perfectly, because by fixing the leaks and creating more storage, including rainwater collection on those small tanks all over town, you will reduce the diversions of water from Lufenholdts Creek, which is stream flow enhancement, keeps the flows up longer, and it helps the steelhead and the aquatic resources. Water quality, the Water Quality Board is the place to go to for the grants for climate resiliency planning, and to do the feasibility analysis on the Franciscan Springs, which are basically, as I've described before, you know, the reason that the flows go the way they do, Eli gave you a very nice representation of how the flows work in Lufenholdts Creek, because of the type of watershed it is, and where he mentioned you had three cubic feet per second in June, and it dropped to one cubic feet in mid-July, and then stayed below one cubic feet all the way through October, you got to realize how amazing that is, that it dropped to this really low flow, and then it just stayed there all through the rest of July, August, September, and October. And the reason that it stayed there is because you have these uplifted marine terraces that are 200-foot-thick sand terraces, so when the rain falls, and people talk about storage in Lufenholdts Creek, what you have is this massive storage of water in the ground, in the soil, groundwater. So the rain falls on the sand, silty terrace, it infiltrates, it purifies it, and then it hits this clay formation underneath that called the Franciscan Layer in geology, and then the water runs out on that clay laterally into the canyon of Lufenholdts and Mill Creeks. So when you tap those springs, they not only run consistently year-round, but they don't go down in the later summer like everything else does. So that would be something to study, and yes, that might take about $50,000 to $100,000 to do that analysis, and converse with the water board over new locations for your diversions, not a new water right, but a new diversion point higher in the watershed, and then work with a couple of landowners from there down to the plant to have gravity flow. You can have a redundant line that would be small hydro, and so by tapping this extremely clean source of water, and having a redundant hydro line, basically, when you think about monthly rates for your customers, your PG&E bill's going down, you may even operate a free plant because you power it yourself. Staff costs go down, chemicals go down, chlorine goes down, and all the engineering costs to treat all this polluted and dirty water at the bottom of the watershed is reduced because you're tapping it up in the springs where it's super clean. So all of those things reduce your costs, and very likely will reduce the overall rates for your customers over time. And the last piece of this is groundwater recharge ponds, and that can be funded by the National Resource Conservation Service. I met with him this week on my property, I'm signing up, we're going to be building two rainwater, groundwater recharge ponds on my property, and the way those work is we gather the rainwater, and then we have clay-lined ponds that then slowly leak that water out in the summer to help with the low flows in Lufenholdts Creek. So as I've said many, many times, I am more than willing to help you in any way I can. It's all free services, and I am a scientist, I am, my master's degree was on Lufenholdts Creek, I am a hydrologist and watershed manager, and so I do use science to do all of my work and to make all of my recommendations. So thank you for the time to share that with you. I think we're in a great position to move forward as a community and become even more self-reliant, and as the mayor said, to be a model city for others, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madron. Other, just a minute, Richard, let me see if there's other comments from the general public. All right, seeing none, Richard?
Yes, I want to thank Supervisor Madron for his information, but what I don't want to attempt to do is to solve our water problem tonight during our meeting. I want to respect everyone's time, and I think I really support Councilmember Davies' proposition to create a water resiliency committee. I think the Planning Commission's probably busy enough, they got their hands full. If you create a committee, those committee members can be formed, and you can spend all the time you need to drill down and figure out the best solution and what the city can afford. The members of our local areas have spoken, the council voted, we need to work within our area and figure out how to solve it, but again, we're not going to do it tonight, but we can appoint a committee that can work to solve the issue. Thank you.
Am I hearing a motion, Richard?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to set up a water resiliency committee to help come up with a plan and guide water resiliency for the city of Trinidad.
And I encourage that you include the language that Tom has in the resolution for the detail, the detail.
No, he's going to ask on. A detailed, a detailed resolution with the committee's charter, the committee's makeup, and things like that. I think Tom laid it all out very eloquently.
Can I, can I, can I modify your motion, Richard?
Sure, please.
So I second Richard's motion to create a water resiliency committee. The committee will be set up by council resolution stating membership, two council members, two Planning Commission members. Steve Madron has said he is interested in being a part of this committee, so I'd like to involve him as being part of the committee. Tasks laid out, grant, you know, tasks and tasks will be laid out to research grant opportunities for specific, specific projects delineated by the committee.
Do you accept the friendly amendment, Richard?
You're on mute, Richard.
Oh, sorry, yes, thank you.
I hope that makes sense.
All right, we have a first and a second.
I didn't really understand that by the end, I didn't really understand the, I kind of understood it, but I didn't hear the motion concisely enough that it made sense to me. I probably just, you know, misheard it.
So I would like to work. There has to be a resolution stating the membership, resolution stating that we'll be subject to the Brown Act, and so the meetings will be properly noticed and public communication can happen, and there will be a task, tasks, and that would be, we're not going to come up with those tasks tonight, I appreciate Richard saying we're not going to solve this problem tonight, but there has to be part of, has to be part of the resolution and a timeframe on the committee so that we can drag on forever.
All right, great, yeah, okay, that makes sense, thank you for clarifying.
And just for, for my own comfort levels, Eli, do you have a clear sense of what we're talking about here?
In general.
Okay, we can, we can make sure the details are fedded out when we bring this back to council. So we have a first and we have a second. Gabe, can we do a?
Mr. Mayor, before you take, can I get one quick comment in?
Sure.
All right, this is Bryce Kenny. I just want to suggest that perhaps you should include a member of the public on the committee, if someone's willing to step forward, and possibly a member from West Haven, that was mentioned earlier. Dave Henkin might be interested in being on the committee. And also specify that it's a standing committee under the Brown Act, public meetings, agenda, the whole shooting match.
Absolutely. All right, do we have a city clerk, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, we'll go ahead and just get right to it. Councilmember Grover?
Yes.
Columbus?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davies?
Yes.
And Ladwin?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much for that. Moving on to item number four, discussion presentation regarding downtown pedestrian improvement project. Eli, I believe we have you introducing, and then Josh providing detail.
Okay, yeah, so this downtown pedestrian improvement project is going to be happening this summer, and a lot of work has been put into it by GHD. Both Josh and Camille have been walking the area, a lot of people may have seen them, measuring sidewalks, and then checking out where the driveway- Walking the area. A lot of people may have seen them measuring sidewalks and, uh, and then checking out where the driveways would be. And this is all to make it more accessible and also to be compliant with the ADA requirements. So I'm going to turn it over to Josh from GHD, Josh Wolfe, and then he can go into detail on the project.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, getting a little feedback, but I think I'll, I'll work through it. So Gabe's going to present or is going to run the slideshow for me. So thank you, Gabe. So, uh, yeah, as Eli said, I just want to. Give you guys a quick update. This is, uh, you know, a couple of weeks delayed. We were hoping to give you this update at the end of January, but obviously. The meeting got cut short. And I know it's late, so I'll try to go as quick as I can. Feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions, but I'm all happy to take questions at the end. Uh, next slide, please, Gabe.
There it is, sorry. Hold on just a second here.
Okay. All right, just a quick outline. I'll run through this quickly. So I'll give you an overview of the project. We'll talk about the funding and the schedule. I'll describe all the improvements. So hopefully you'll be clear on what to expect. Talk about the construction budget, the current engineer's estimate. Want to give you a little bit of background on some of the public meetings and outreach that's happened thus far. Talk about next steps and then questions, certainly. Next slide. Uh, so this is just an overview of the project area. So obviously this is Trinidad. The red outlines the project locations. A little bit of this is cut off, but I can, I can work with it. So the project generally includes pedestrian and connectivity. Improvements on Trinity Street, Patrick's Point Drive and Scenic Drive. Includes upgrading sidewalks, driveways, curb ramps, crosswalks and some isolated areas of pavement repair. Next slide, please. Can you, is it possible to scroll down a little bit more, Gabe? It looks like some of these are getting cut off.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's looking okay on my end, but I guess I can't see what you guys see, so.
Josh, you can scroll down on the, on what you see on the webex.
Oh, is it just? Oh, I see. Thank you. All right, so I, I picture this project really as a continuation of the 2012 Gateway Project. So that project focused on. Improvements primarily to Main Street and a little bit of the northern end of Trinity Street. Uh, so this project is shown in red. It's a continuation of improvements along both sides of Trinity Street. As well as a little bit on Patrick's Point Drive and Scenic Drive. Next slide, please. Uh, so as far as the need, uh, really focuses around the fact that there's a lot of non-compliant sidewalks and driveways and curb ramps through downtown area. Uh, there's a lack of accessible routes to and from the library, the museum, Saunders Park. Trinidad Town Hall and elementary school. Uh, and obviously to the, the Trinidad Bay overlook over Edward Street. Uh, there's also some non-standard off-street parking areas. This is primarily in front of the tennis courts by Town Hall. As well as some off-street parking near the eatery, which I'll show you. Um, and there's some areas of pavement distress primarily on Patrick's Point Drive. Next slide, please. Uh, so the purpose again is just to remove the accessibility barriers, barriers, upgrade the pedestrian facilities. Along portions of Trinity Street, Patrick's Point Drive and Scenic Drive. And then a secondary purpose is to. Try to address the integrity of the roadway. That's a secondary purpose because we're concerned that the funding is limited and we may not be able to. Fund all the improvements. Um, so primarily, we're going to focus on the accessibility improvements and if funding allows, we'll try to tackle some of the pavement issues. Next slide. So I want to give you just an idea of some of the deficiencies that are out there. So this is Trinity Street starting on the left side. This is just a really typical driveway. Uh, along Trinity Street. This is typical of about eleven, eleven locations to meet ADA standards, the cross slope of the sidewalk and driveways. Uh, we need to be less than two percent and all of them mislocation on Trinity Street are greater than five percent. So none of them are compliant. And the same thing with the curb ramps, which are the ramps at the corners, which, uh, you know, where the sidewalk sloped down to crosswalks. Again, they need to be two percent. Uh, I believe this intersection on the right side is at West Street and Trinity Street. We see it's about six point three percent. Um, so typical six locations, none of them are compliant. Next slide. And this is some examples of the off-street parking. So on the left, obviously, this is the tennis courts. The, you know, the sidewalk and driveway is behind the vehicle. So the vehicle knows in in front of the tennis courts, forcing pedestrians to walk behind them. Uh, and from this photo, you can see often large, large vehicles, even small vehicles often overhang. Uh, the sidewalk forcing pedestrians out into the road or onto a very narrow portion of the sidewalk. It's also certainly just a visibility hazard, especially with small. School children as they're walking along here, uh, very difficult to see them out the rearview, out the rearview window when people are backing up. Um, that's, that driveway is also too steep as well. So it's about four percent. Again, the standard's two percent. And then on the right is the eatery. Another spot, we see a lot of off-street parking issues. In this case, vehicles, um, you know, not utilizing the parking correctly, blocking the sidewalk really entirely. So just example of a couple of the items that we want to address with this project. Next slide. And then these are, this is Patrick's Point Drive. So the project includes some sidewalk and driveways right in front of the Chevron Station. So there's an old asphalt. Sidewalk and, and some driveway drops there. Again, very steep. Uh, and also just really poor condition. It's old asphalt, doesn't hold up as well as, as concrete. Uh, so this would be replaced as part of the project. Uh, next, please. And another example on Patrick's Point Drive on the left side, this is the driveway to the Saunders Shopping Center. There's an old. Storm drain there that's been driven over. It's crushed, exposed. It's a hazard to vehicles as well as pedestrians walking along there, especially at night if you don't see that. And then, then on the right, some of the pavement condition, Patrick's Point Drive. So the project, uh, is outlined in the staff board, funded by a five hundred fifty thousand dollar grant from the STIP program. That's the State Transportation Improvement Program, just funded through Caltrans. Uh, and includes a thirty thousand dollar match contribution from the city of Trinidad. The planning phase began back in May of twenty nineteen. The environmental secret document was completed in December twenty nineteen and the final design was completed. In December of twenty twenty. Uh, construction is anticipated to begin in April or May, I'd say of twenty twenty-one. And will take approximately two months to complete. Uh, so work locations again, Trinity Street, Patrick's Point Drive and Scenic. On Trinity, we're looking to replace, uh, the curbs, gutters, sidewalks, driveways, curb ramps. On both sides of the roads at various locations. We're not doing everything. It's really a targeted removal, finding the spots that are out of compliance and then. Focusing the efforts on those. On Patrick's Point Drive is really replacement of the sidewalk and driveway along the Chevron. Station there on the west side of the road and some pavement repair. And then on Scenic Drive, it's really the portion between. Uh, Main Street and the Saunders driveway. So that spot in front of Salties. Looking to extend some new sidewalk and driveway there and do some minor drainage improvements. Uh, then I want to point out that the, um, the majority of the work is within city right-of-way, existing city right-of-way. However, there are some situations where we will need to work on private property. This is where. Um, we'll be replacing the driveway drops within city right-of-way. We'll need to do some conforms onto the private property to make sure that their driveways. Provide smooth transitions to the city facilities. I believe there's four conditions like this and in all of those, we have obtained the necessary permissions from the property owners. Uh, so just walking through some improvements. So this is Trinity Street. Uh, so again, the target replacement of curbs, gutters and sidewalks, the work area is shown in blue. Uh, you can go to the next slide, Gabe. Uh, which is, let's see, coming up here, just another view of the same thing. Edward Street is on the left. Uh, and then it wraps around. So north is to the right. So the dark hatched areas are the, the areas where we're focusing the work. You go to the next slide. Uh, so these are the locations of the curb ramp replacement. So seven, seven locations, the two at Edward Street, the four at the Parker, West and Trinity intersection. And then we're also looking to redo the ramp in front of the beachcomber. The next. And then here are the driveway locations. I believe there's eleven in all. These will all be replaced. And then, um, what's not shown here is there's also sidewalk improvements. You can picture some of the spots between these driveways that is, that has a hatched areas. So those are areas where the sidewalk's non-compliant. So those will be replaced as well. For the next. And then one of the more noticeable improvements. Uh, will be in front of the tennis court and Town Hall. So again, in the upper right is where that. Sidewalk currently runs behind the existing parked perpendicular stall. So we're actually going to swap that around. Uh, move the sidewalk in front of the stall. So it'll shift, uh, right adjacent to the tennis courts. And then the, the vehicles will be, um, closer to the road, but with no pedestrian accessway in between. Um, this will prevent the vehicles from overhanging into the sidewalk at all, give pedestrians a clear path. Um, it will also include a new accessible parking stall. So there is an accessible stall currently in front of Town Hall. That one's also non-compliant. So this will replace that. Provide a new compliance stall with access into Town Hall. The blue line here just shows the pedestrian path of travel. So it is a little bit out of direction compared to the current configuration, but I would say it's a lot safer. So overall, in my opinion, a great improvement. Uh, next slide. And then this is in front of the eatery. Um, so the upper right again, existing condition, which I'm sure you've all seen, have seen of vehicles. Blocking, uh, the walkway and the curb ramp in some situations. Um, so the improvements here that I do want to point out to, they've been, they've been done in close coordination with the owners of the eatery as well as the folks who run the restaurant. Um, we've had numerous meetings with them, um, made some, you know, numerous design changes along the way and came to agreement on something that we can work for them and work for the city as well. Um, they currently have three off-street parking stalls. Um, they used to have more, but they've lost some along the way as they had to do some septic upgrades along, along over the years, as you said. Um, so they currently have three. The plan is to maintain two of those, the two on the far. Um, the far left side of the screen. So this is again Trinity Street. On the bottom and then the eatery is up on the top. So the two parking stalls will be maintained, but the eatery has agreed to. Um, change those and actually sign them and, and strike them as compact and, and work to enforce that. Uh, only allow smaller vehicles to utilize those and try to make a better effort to keep vehicles from overhanging the sidewalk. And then where the other, uh, existing parking stall is near Parker Street, which is about where that, that black truck is shown. That would be eliminated and instead of having a driveway drop there, you know, ramp, that would be converted into a full height sidewalk. And what we gain there is one additional on-street parallel parking stall. And then by moving, eliminating that at that access point off Trinity Street. Um, it actually creates a little bit more room within their existing parking lot. Uh, and they're going to look at an additional stall which will actually be accessed off Parker Street. So they don't. We don't anticipate a net loss of any on-street or off-street parking for them. And we're actually going to pick up one additional stall on Trinity Street as part of this. Uh, next, please. Uh, this is Patrick's Point Drive. So I mentioned, you know, limiting, limited funding. So how we're structuring the biz, we're going to have a, a base bid and some additive, additive bid items. The base bid is Trinity Street. What that means is that, um, we're going to, we've designed and we're going to advertise and solicit bids for the base and all the additives. Um, but in the event that there's not enough money to, to fund the construction, everything, the construction of everything, we prioritize what will go first. So. Trinity Street is the priority. Um, after that, it runs in order of the additive bid items. Additive bid item one is next and then two and then three. So additive bid item, item one is the sidewalk and driveway repair in front of the Chevron Station on Patrick's Point Drive. Uh, two is the pavement repair on Patrick's Point Drive. And I showed you example of that earlier. Uh, next, please, Gabe. And then in front of Salties along Scenic Drive here. Uh, the plan would be to, so this is added a bit item three. So this would be the least priority, but if funding allows. Uh, we would extend a concrete sidewalk and driveway drop through the Salties driveway and it would end right at the Saunders. Uh, the Saunders Market or Saunders Shopping Center driveway off Scenic. And then there'd be. Uh, the repair, I should say, replacement of that culvert. We put in a standard drain inlet with the grate on top. And then a new pipe to tie into a drainage inlet. It's already there to clean up that whole intersection. Uh, as far as construction budget, so, uh, there is. Four hundred nine thousand dollars available for construction capital. Uh, along with fifty-six thousand dollars for the construction management oversight and administration by the city. Uh, the construction estimate is shown below here. So the base bid is estimated. This is a little bit old. Um, since it's from several weeks ago, but it's, it's pretty close. Around three hundred seventy thousand dollars for the base bid. Uh, the additive alternate ones, the Patrick's Point Drive sidewalk and driveways at thirty-six thousand, the rehab. On Patrick's Point Drive at twenty thousand. And then the sidewalk and driveway work and storm, storm drain work. Along Scenic Drive is around thirty-five thousand. Uh, next, please. Um, and then I, since I know there's some new council members here, I did just want to, um, provide just a brief overview of some of the outreach and meetings that have taken place because this certainly isn't a new project. Um, I believe this is the fourth council meeting that I've been at, uh, associated with it. The first one was back in December of twenty seventeen. Uh, when an overview of the project was first presented to council when, um, there was this call for projects for the STIP funding. A month later, council committed the thirty thousand dollar match for the project. Uh, and then in twenty nineteen, council authorized staff to proceed with project development, including, including the environmental design and right-of-way phases. Um, we also did some targeted outreach in twenty nineteen. We did have an informational poster at the Fish Festival. Um, and then in November of twenty nineteen, we had a public open house over several hours at Town Hall. Uh, invited the public to come in at their leisure, provided an overview of the project, with maps, exhibits. Um, I was there. Uh, answering questions. Uh, so really made an effort to get the, get the word out. And then. This year, uh, primarily in fall, but really stretched all year. Uh, we really made an effort to reach out to everyone who touched the project. So anybody who owned property. Uh, lived adjacent to any of the work, we went door to door. Tried to get ahold of people who, if we couldn't get ahold of them, we called them, we emailed them. Um, the city sent out, uh, notices to them and we really didn't have any luck. And that example notice is shown on the right. So. Um, I hope that everyone was able to, um. See something on this project or be able to talk to us. I certainly hope this isn't the first time they heard about it. I'm shocked. Um, but if we weren't able to get ahold of people, um, you know, my contact information's here. It'll, it'll be. Shown again on later slides, but I'd be happy to meet with folks, come up there and, uh, show them what the improvements are in front of their house, talk through. Um, what they should expect. Um, so please reach out, anyone if you're on this, on this meeting and want more information and feel like you haven't, you haven't had the opportunity to. To see things or ask questions.
Thank you, Josh. Uh, any questions from the council for Mr. Wool?
Let, let me give one, if I, if you don't mind, let me just cover this last slide. No, that's, no problem. So just next steps I want to cover. So. Um, the construction funding. So this, again, this slide's a little bit old. Uh, the construction funds were allocated by the California Transportation Commission at their January meeting. So. Um, the city is ready to advertise and the, the current plan actually is that the project will be advertised for bid starting Thursday. Uh, we're doing a three-week bid period. So the bid opening will be, I believe it's March fourth. And then our hope is to award construction contract at the March council meeting. Uh, start construction again in April or May and it will take a couple of months to construct. So with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Wool.
Okay, sorry about that, Josh. Um, any questions or, uh, clarification needed from Josh, from the council? Go ahead, Tom.
Hi, Josh. I, I think I talked to you about this at your open house.
I think you did.
And, um, so I just wanted to reaffirm what I think what we've talked about, that the street, Trinity Street will not be narrowed by this project.
Uh, yeah, good question. So the sidewalk width is going to be unchanged.
Okay.
Um, I, I will say there's one caveat to that. There's a couple driveways where we are going to bolt them out into the street a little bit. It's just because of the way we had to do it in order to make the transitions work. There's a couple that are very steep. Uh, we want to ensure the cars aren't going to scrape or have problems getting in and out. So there are going to be a little bit of diversion out into a street by a couple of feet. Um, but it's by a couple of feet. And so we're not going to encroach, we're not going to lose any parking in as a result. And it's not going to narrow the travel lane at all.
Okay, so not as far as the bulbous in front of.
No, 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 not even close.
Okay, and then it's probably too late for this, but, um, you have those additive bids.
Yeah.
I like additive bid number three as a more, a priority. That is such a dangerous corner to turn onto that street into the market. And I don't know if it would be possible to swap out any of those additive bids.
Um, potentially, that's interesting. I, I, that's good, that's good feedback. I, I assumed that was a lower priority for folks. And, oh, well, let me, let me explain why, why I thought Patrick's Point was a higher priority.
Okay.
Um, and it's because it has to do with, um, you know, you, you may recall the county's consent decree around ADA improvements. Years ago that Trinidad got roped into because of the Trinidad Library. Um, some of the deficiencies that were identified as a lack of accessible round of travel from the library to the bus stop on Main Street. The current walkway that runs, um, it's that meandering walkway. On the west side of the Chevron was identified. on the west side of the Chevron was identified as noncompliant. My hope was that by improving the facilities on Patrick's Point Drive and creating an accessible route from the library here, that that will take away that barrier. And that you will then have an accessible path of travel to the bus stop, from the bus stop to the library, so that's why that one was a higher priority. It doesn't mean that we can't switch it.
Yeah.
And I'd also say it certainly doesn't, we, we could also you know, I'm hesitant to change it too much right now, but we certainly could look at it. But we could always award the base bid and change things around on how we actually, what we actually construct.
Yeah, are there consequences right now for the non, I mean, that's a pretty nice sidewalk that's noncompliant, I don't know why, maybe because of it meanders or something. But um, do we, are there any fines or anything that the city's susceptible to if we don't change that around?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure, Eli may have more information, I believe that the, the city might be obligated at least in the long term to correct the deficiencies, but I, I don't know the nuance of it.
Okay, thank you.
Eli, are you able to weigh in on?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here, and I'm, I'm not aware of uh, what kind of repercussion there would be. Uh, Gabe, have you received anything in the mail regarding that?
No, we haven't.
Oh, okay, yeah, we haven't received anything, Josh and Tom.
Other questions from the council for Josh?
I, I really don't have a question, but I just want to announce, just tell, tell you that uh, Josh is, uh, and his crew have really done a nice job, I think of at least contacting us is um, because we're going to have some major changes and they've done a really good job of keeping us informed and keeping us on track, so I just want to appreciate the work they've done to try to uh, help us out to make sure we're on board, so, thank you.
All right, how about public comments uh, regarding this project? All right, seeing or hearing none? Thank you very much, Josh, for updating us. Um, and we look forward to seeing this project get going. And next, uh, uh, from what I understand, in the March meeting, we'll have a, hopefully a vote on which contract to award.
That's right, our hope is to bring it back for a, a recommendation to award.
Fabulous.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mayor.
We are, uh, past five hours that the council has uh, been engaged in this meeting. And so I'm going to propose a couple of options for us, one is to have our next item number five um, be our last item, the discussion uh, update on the urgency ordinance. Uh, but I also want to check with Eli and see if there are any other uh, agenda items that must be covered tonight for any reason.
Yeah, I was going to indicate the next item after that, item six is actually Josh. And since he's here, uh, and this was actually on the consent agenda from the last meeting. And Tom pulled it because he had like a question or so, so I thought maybe we could address that while Josh is here. And uh, and then you can go ahead, do the STR and then, and then that's fine with me.
How does the council feel about that?
Is it okay to switch the items around after we've approved the agenda?
It's a little out of the ordinary, um, for sure.
Can I add one thing, I'm sorry, this is Gabe, the city clerk, I, I gotta add on the planning commissioner appointments. Um, the city count, uh, the planning commission is really hoping to uh, to be to be whole by adding new commissioners, um, two of which, two of the four currently have, their terms have just expired. So to keep them on track and legit, I think it would be um, really helpful to have that item addressed as much as possible because they have a meeting coming up in, in.
Yeah, and uh, let me weigh in that uh, I have not experienced the problem with changing something like this, just, you're just basically changing the order, we're not adding anything new to the agenda.
Just checking, just want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Yeah, appreciate that, uh, check. I, I feel like again that we're not adding or subtracting anything, we're just um, for sake of the council's attention span, I think we're running into uh, diminishing returns if we just do the whole agenda, so what I'm hearing is that the planning commission appointments, the presentation from Josh on the local road safety plan and the STR moratorium discussion would be the, the last three things that we discussed, is that agreed upon by the council?
Yes. That's fine. Yes.
I don't have a druther either way, I could go till two in the morning.
No. Well, uh, hearing uh, pretty much agreement, let's go ahead and move on with Josh. Um, moving item number six. Discussion decision regarding GHD agreement for local road safety plan funding. Um, so Tom, you did ask to put this in the public discussion, can you refresh our memory of why you wanted to take this off the consent and have it in the um, discussion section?
Yeah, um, I had some questions about it. Um, let me flip through my notes here and make sure I've got down. So um, the, the grant was for forty-four thousand five hundred dollars. And I looked at the proposed spending and it looks like forty-five hundred dollars isn't accounted for in the outline table that has the um, money in it. So I'm wondering what that
Yeah, um, sure, so um, my understanding, and, and this, and I, I didn't develop this grant, but my understanding is that the city secured forty thousand dollars from Caltrans to do the, the the project, but they also included a forty-five hundred dollar match, and I believe that match was going to be in the form of staff time. So our proposal is for forty thousand dollars, which is the amount that's reimbursable by Caltrans. Uh, and the remainder was for, to cover city staff time and participate through the process.
Okay, and is six miles, can you define six miles of road, like is it forward, is it, you know, is it out and back, is it linear, does that make sense?
I would have to look, it's probably lane miles, I would have to look and verify that, so it'd be, it'd be each lane, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and, and this would be entirely within the city limits?
Yes, and, and I, I would have to look and confirm that number.
Okay.
Because it sounds like you may be second guessing now, which is fair, seems a lot, doesn't it?
Yeah, we have one square mile, and I've run every single one of these things and I can only put together about you know, three and a half miles almost, but that's not, that, I don't know if you're considering roads out to Lanford um, in that area as well, so. Could be down scenic out to Lanford Road and around, it's possible it could add on some mileage there.
Yeah, and whether it's right or not, I don't know, and I can certainly double check, but the intent would be mile, road miles within the city limits, so it would include um, city maintained facilities as well as um, US 101 where cross is through.
Okay, and then uh, my other question is, I noticed that we're asking for this is the concern, we're asking for a safety chief or captain or something was the language and and we're having a really hard time finding people to fill our other committees right now, like on the trails committee, we've been vacant for two years on a citizen person. Um, three meetings, two working and one council for seven thousand five hundred dollars. And then any additional meetings are on time and materials. What, how often do we need additional meetings, because seventy-five hundred dollars for three meetings seems really expensive?
Yeah, well, they're workshops, so they're not just meetings, they're interactive workshops to um, you know, engage with the stakeholders. Um, solicit information, share, share progress, so uh, there's, there's work to prepare for them and certainly work during them and work after them. Um, as far as extra meetings, yeah, I mean, this, this is the scope of work, so we try to define what's included and what's not. Um, I don't expect, I certainly don't expect any more meetings. Um, I think that's language we could strike out, the assumption is, you know, the meetings that are in there are the meetings that are needed.
Yeah, I would be really comfort, more comfortable with that, just because I've worked with contractors on time and materials and it's never a good situation.
Yeah, no, that's fair, that's fair.
And um, another question I had was, so this grant, this is, my understanding is this is done as a um, like a requirement or some kind of a, uh, I can't think of the word right now, the pre, pre-approval or something to use for um, HISP improvement money? Highway safety improvement money, is that what that stands for, something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
So this has to be done before the city can apply for that kind of money?
This is a new requirement, so actually the city did just apply for this money in fall. Um, but moving forward for future cycles, you're required to have an LRSP in place to be eligible for the program.
Okay, and this is an LRSP, all right, and so can you give me any examples of previous projects that Trinidad has used this um, highway safety improvement money for? Which you're aware of?
Um, yeah, like I said, we just, the city just applied for the previous cycle, it was for um, edge line striping, so pavement striping. Um, it included replacing non-standard guardrails on scenic drive and Patrick's Point Drive. Uh, and it included some uh, curb ramp improvements and crosswalk improvements on uh, Main Street and Edward Street.
Okay, so thank you for that, I just, I'm kind of looking at a cost benefit thing here, you know. For forty, for forty-five thousand do the highway improvement funds, does it, you know, do you get back that much money or I don't know how much those other kind of projects cost.
The grant, I don't have it at the tip of my fingers, but it was over, you know, over half million dollars as I recall.
That the city's applying for? Okay, thank you, those are my questions.
Any other questions or clarification that we would like from Josh? Uh, let's go to public comment, Mr. Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, when I read this proposal over, I had some similar uh, concerns as Tom Davies. Because the focus for it seems to be for identifying fatal and severe injuries on that six-mile stretch. And you know, because, because we have such low-speed roads in, in the city limits down to fifteen miles an hour on a lot of them, it's just very obvious that we don't have a lot of fatal and severe injury accidents, thank goodness. So I just, it just seems like we're not going to score very high uh, to get, to get additional funds. But I noticed there were a couple of other possible funding sources, one called ATP and one called SB one. I don't know, you know, what those exactly are or how realistic it is, but my general concern was you know, is this a program that's really going to benefit Trinidad? Or are we just, you know, getting a grant because the money's out there? Kind of thing, so, and I don't know if, if this might already be a done deal. As far as having applied for and gotten the money. But I, I also, you know, bringing, expecting a, a member of the public to sit on a, another volunteer committee to make this all work too, seems, you know, it just makes you wonder, we've got other committees a lot more fundamental that we, we're not filling all the positions on, so. Those are my thoughts, and I hope you guys w- have some questions along those lines too, as you look at this and uh, or maybe it should have been looked at previously before we signed up, but anyway. Those are my thoughts, and I want to thank you guys for all the hard work, I know this is a long night, we really appreciate what you're doing for the city.
Any uh, response for Mr. Kenny from, uh, from you, Josh?
Um, sure, ATP, Active Transportation Program. Uh, it's a big, big state program which funds primarily bike and pedestrian improvements, and SB one's the uh, Senate bill one, so it's a, a program that, it's uh, essentially the gas tax, Trinidad gets money every, every quarter, I believe. Um, and I would think of this, I mean, I mean, you're right, Trinidad has unique, unique issues, there are certainly not a lot of collision data available for Trinidad and that's, that's unfortunate. Um, I think a lot of that is because collisions don't go reported, I, I was in Trinidad a few months ago and saw a collision at uh, in Maine and scenic and, you know, I, I wouldn't be surprised if that never shows up on the books. Um, and just because there haven't been fatals or severe collisions, I mean, there have been some. Um, that, you know, that's a good thing, but it doesn't mean that there aren't, there aren't uh, risky situations out there, out there. There are issues that could lead to those, so part of this program is not just to look at where the collisions are, but it's to look at um, where are the collisions, where, where, where are the situations that are most likely to um, have a collision, and can you address those, those situations before there's an issue? Um, so just because there is an issue, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that, that means you shouldn't look at it, and also um, you know, it's a great opportunity, it's funded by Caltrans, take a step back and, and get a, a group of folks together from, from different perspectives, different stakeholders, to take a, a more holistic look at the city and, and try to plan better for what are the next projects, is there a safety project that the city needs, if there's not, that's fine too. But I suspect there will at least be some, and it doesn't always have to be engineering projects either, this will also look at um, if there needs to be more enforcement. Um, hopefully the CHP and or uh, uh, the sheriff's office would be part of it, so enforcement certainly comes into play as well as education. So it's not always just about engineering projects, and I'd say there's also, you, you know, my mind when I think about safety in Trinidad. You know, certainly Maine, Maine and, and scenic comes to mind, that's a, a big intersection, it, it seems like it needs to be looked at. Um, Patrick's Point Drive has as many problems as that, if not more, I can, I could certainly see a safety project coming out of Patrick's Point Drive. Um, you know, we've done some striping there recently, that certainly could use some guardrail, probably some improved signage. Um, maybe some, you know, some, some improvements to the facility curve, curve, curvature corrections and widening on the shoulders in some areas, things like that, so um, there's certainly opportunities throughout town to find, find something if there's a need.
Thank you very much, Josh, uh, any further discussion from the council? I believe at this point, we are looking for a motion.
Let me see, all a move that we accept the GHD uh, agreement for local road safety plan funding.
A second.
All right, we have a first and a second, any discussion? All right, at this point, if we could do a roll call vote, I'd appreciate it, oh, yes, Mr. Davies?
Sorry, this whole mute button thing. Yeah, I just want to bring up and echo what Bryce is saying, and I've said this before, so it's not a big surprise that, I hope we can just in the future start looking at grants for what we really need and not where they're out there, because, you know, I, I appreciate Josh's explanation, he answered some of my questions and I really appreciate that. When I hear, you know, we could probably find something here and find something there. On the staff time that they could be, even though, you know, the city has to match that, could be doing other things with the staff time. Um, so just the appropriateness of some of the grants that are coming through.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, uh, we'll go ahead with a roll call vote here, council member Grover?
Yes.
Columbus?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Davies?
No.
And Ladwick?
Aye.
Four yes, one no, Davies the dissenting vote. Four yes, one no, Davies the dissenting vote, motion carries.
Alright, thank you for that, so, at this point, we have the STR moratorium continued discussion and the appointment of our commissioners. Um, so, I'm gonna ask Jack to take over, and I'm going to recuse myself and not return for the, the commissioner uh, vote, just because of, I don't wanna come back into Jack and Jan's house late at night. At this point, I thank you very much for taking over, and I also thank you, uh, everyone for your discussion this evening.
Alright, we're gonna um, look at the uh, discussion update on this, on the STR moratorium status. Uh, I guess, Eli, you wanna give us some of the information that you have about that?
Sure, so, prepared the uh, staff report and basically indicating that um, this is an opportunity for the council to uh, revisit this item. Uh, we have the moratorium going until March fourteenth. We indicated that we could look at it pre, you know, before then, see if it needs to be shortened, uh, and of course, we can even look at it after then, if need be to extend it. Uh, currently, uh, staff feels that it should remain in place with a few possible modifications. Uh, the concern is that visitors would be coming from high-risk areas in California and other states, uh, mainly like from LA and so on, uh, where there are still problems. And uh, and as a result, we felt that if people could stay within the county, that that might be a good viable option. Previously, when we had the moratorium last year, we did allow people to staycation if they were uh, within Humboldt County, which we were following the uh, county guideline at the time. Uh, and even though the county hasn't uh, gotten into a lodging moratorium like we have, uh, we, we think that maybe having the staycations, that that would be uh, logical and reasonable. And the other thing is, we've had requests from a couple of the STR owners saying, uh, you know, we're closed for a period of time, requiring us to have sixty-day rentals in order to remain as an STR, seems unreasonable, so we're suggesting to knock that down to thirty days minimum for the year, since we do have approximately three months uh, with the moratorium. In addition to that, we did receive some comments, uh, and I know it's late, so it, I'll summarize them rather than read them, because uh,
About this, please? We had, we had about eighty comments on the feasibility study. None read into the record, and this is, this has become something that's been happening, when one person decides to write a letter and ask for it to be read into the record.
Okay.
It's not, it's not happening for any other agenda item, I
Okay, so, that's fine with me, I, you know, I, I wasn't gonna read the, you know, I was just gonna summarize it, but I don't even have to summarize it then, uh, since it was included in the packet. Uh, so, uh, the, one letter is in support of continuing the moratorium, and one letter is opposed and wants to end the moratorium. So anyway, those are suggestions to go ahead and uh, uh, keep the moratorium in place, and at the same time, to allow staycations of Humboldt County residents, and to reduce the uh, minimum number of days to be an STR for the year, down to thirty. So, I'll, I'll entertain any questions.
Before I, I just wanna add real quick that we had a um, forty-eight cases since Friday, and last month was the biggest month of, that there, of this at all ever had, and uh, right now, the ICU um, percentage is at seventeen point nine, that's as of today. Well, this very low, anyway, I just wanted to add those things, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question, I don't recall in the original moratorium that, that um, required dates of, of reservations were um, put in the original moratorium, can you substantiate that for me?
When you're saying required dates?
Okay, so part of, my understanding is we're looking at, we're revisiting this moratorium. I don't think that in the very first moratorium where there was the minimum we didn't address the minimum requirement of sixty days for STRs in the original moratorium, I think.
Right.
So
Right, we didn't address it, but it is in the STR ordinance, the sixty days, so what we're suggesting is to reduce it to thirty days.
I think it would be better to look at that at a later date. Um, the year is young, there's still time to revisit that. I don't think, it, it's not part of the original moratorium, and it says, update on urgency ordinance STR moratorium status, and you're talking about something that's from an entirely different ordinance. So I'm, I'm not sure it's appropriate. That's my question, and I'll have comments after a public comment. Thank you.
Any other comments, Richard?
Yeah, thank you, I, I attempted uh, two different times to reach out to Dr. Ian Hoffman. He's the County Health Director. Um, asking him to help me understand the county's position, because from the state perspective, if you look at their stay-at-home order, uh, they're not recommending anyone traveling out of state to stay, and they're not recommending anyone traveling more than a hundred and twenty miles uh, from the location. They also provide uh, this fifteen percent regional ICU bed availability. Currently, it's thirty-six percent, I'm looking at the current uh, COVID dashboard for Humboldt County, where we have twenty-five percent capacity, but regional is thirty-six percent. Also, what I'm seeing on the state positivity rate over fourteen-day average, it's decreased by seven and a half percent. So I, I'm on the fence, I, you know, we're not through this yet. On the same token, I'm not sure if eliminating all vacation rentals, like stay vacation within the county i- is necessarily going to make a big difference for COVID cases here. So I, I, again, I would love to have some external advice to help me make a decision, because on the one hand, I'm not seeing anything from the state or the county that would say, we should have a moratorium. On the other hand, I don't wanna put our citizens at risk either. So I, I, again, I wish there was more additional input uh, that could help me understand whether or not we're overreacting as a town, and whether or not we should modify it slightly to allow stay vacation from the, the uh, county of Humboldt, for that part, thank you.
Richard, will you mind if I ask you about that information? I looked up information today, and I said, saw the ICU in Humboldt County was seventeen point six percent, as I thought of today, so I thought it was much different than what you've got.
No, I'm on the docs.google.com for Humboldt County, I can email it to you. Um, it's current, I just refreshed it.
Okay, maybe it's changed, but this, I looked this morning and saw that we have a really, uh, that the ICU is seventeen point nine percent, so, anyway.
It changed.
I, I'll double check.
That was a couple days ago, but it, it changed, and it could have been, I refreshed it after you saw it.
Alright, um, I'm gonna look, I'm gonna look too, but uh, David, did you have some comment you wanna make?
No, I was just pleased today to see only five cases in Humboldt, but, you know, that's not like an indication of our decision-making here per se, but I, I'm, yeah, the feeling, I know we have a couple more discussion items that we're gonna come back to earlier, so I, I mean, like, next week, and I, I think that would be a good time to assess this from, from where I'm standing, and I'm seeing it go down, I have a, you know, optimistic view of here that we might be able to lift it.
Alright, uh, Tom, you have something you gotta add? Okay, uh, okay, um, is, so let's, uh, is there anybody, any public comment? And you'll probably have to speak up, so I can know you're out there. Okay, I'm, I don't, I see no public comments, so let's bring it back to the council, um, I'm not gonna have time to look this up, so we'll just go ahead and, and um, um, now, it was suggested that we might wanna add uh, something, so, uh, Richard, do you wanna do a, make a motion with that information, or, or David?
Yeah, uh, after looking at the data, again, I'm, I'm trying to be sensitive to both residents and also looking at the data itself. Um, I'd be willing to accept or, or be able to promote a motion where local Humboldt County residents can do a stay vacation in Trinidad, as long as they live within the county, I, I'm willing to accept that. Uh, at least, and for the next thirty days until we look at this again, until it expires, so, the motion would be to permit short-term rentals to have local Humboldt County residents stay in Trinidad.
Okay, do we, do we have a second?
Can I ask a question about that motion first?
We probably should go to a second, then we can ask questions, is there, does anybody have a second for that?
Uh, but I didn't, I didn't hear that the motion was to continue the moratorium with this exception.
I see what you mean, okay, go ahead. Uh, Rich, Richard, did you hear what he said?
Yeah, and so my motion is, it, would it be to modify the moratorium, is that the proper way to say it?
I think you would say, continue the moratorium with this additional app.
Okay, let me try it again. I'm gonna make a motion to continue with the uh, short-term rental moratorium with the exception that residents from Humboldt County can stay at short-term rentals in the city.
A second, Ed.
Okay, can I make a?
Now, there's already, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, um, so, we are having, we have trouble in the best of times during this enforcing uh, people from staying when they're not supposed to be staying. And now we'll have, potentially, you know, I don't think everybody's gonna rush to Trinidad to have a staycation, but you never know. Um, enforcing, finding out if, are these people actually from Humboldt County? Or are they from Del Norte County, or are they from, uh, whatever county Redding is in? So, I have an issue with that portion of the motion, the staycation motion. For continuing moratorium.
Yeah, I, I could comment, uh, so, when we had the uh, moratorium last year, uh, we did allow people to stay from Humboldt County, and uh, it worked out fine. Uh, in advance, I, I request that anyone that's going to be staying in any short-term rental, uh, you know, notify me in advance, and then make a request saying there's, this is someone from Humboldt County, and they'll identify the city, uh, or they might uh, say that this is an essential worker, and then send me the documentation regarding that. Then I would approve it, and then they could stay here, but we didn't have any problem uh, with that previously, so I, I think especially because we only have another month to go, I, I don't think it really would be a problem, and uh, you know, we'll uh, be on top of it like we were before.
Okay, alright, we have a, a motion and a second. Um, all in favor, oh, let's do, excuse me, I'm sorry, uh, Dave, could you count, please?
Yes, so, what we have on the table is a motion uh, made by Councilmember Columbus, seconded by Grover, to continue the moratorium with the exception that residents of Humboldt County can stay in STRs in Trinidad. And uh, we'll start with Councilmember Grover.
I'll say yes.
Columbus?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Davies?
No.
And Ladwig is uh, been excused, re-cued, actually, so that would be what? Three yes, one no, and a refusal by Mayor Ladd.
Thank you. Alright, we have um, one more that we have to get finished, and that is, um, whoa, whoa. Oh, the Planning Commission, number ten, so, uh, Eli, this is um, Planning Commissioner appointments.
Yeah, so, this is the Planning Commission, and uh, we have, uh, I'm not sure if uh, they're on board here, I was just looking to see. Uh, so anyway, we do have one new application, I don't have it right in front of me, and uh, and uh, and then we do have a renewal of uh, the existing commissioners, so that this way, everybody's term is up to speed, uh, Aaron is the uh, person who is being nominated, who would be new. He actually serves on our uh, Volunteer Fire Department when he is in town. Uh, and uh, and he would like to serve on the Planning Commission. Uh, he's been a very good asset to the uh, Volunteer Fire Department, and I'm sure he would be an asset to our uh, Planning Commission, otherwise, it's the renewal for Diane Stockness, and I believe Tom Hopkins, is, is that correct? I don't have it right in front of me, Dave, do you recall?
Yes.
Okay, okay, yeah, so, so that's what it's for.
And also, um, did you mention Diane Stockness?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
Okay, sorry, late, I meant that.
No problem. Yeah, and Cheryl Kelly's on the call, so she could help, uh, since she's the chair.
Alright, are there, um, are there any comments from, are the council any questions you wanna ask? Tom?
I don't have any questions, I just, I've, I've met Aaron, very nice uh, gentleman, and I would fully support him being nominated to the Planning Commission.
Alright, anybody else have a comment? I will, alright, let's go to the public comment, Cheryl, go ahead.
Yeah, just quickly, I was gonna try to uh, put it in the comments, but I sent a letter, so, first regarding Commissioner Stockness, um, I just wanted to say, as a long-term Trinidad community member, Diane brings a depth of knowledge and experience to the commission, she's open-minded, a good listener. I support her continuing for another two years on the Planning Commission. Um, second, I support the appointment of Aaron uh, Hakkinen, I hope I'm saying his last name correctly. Aaron and I spoke via Zoom several weeks ago, he'll make a great addition to the team, I believe he has a good understanding of the work involved on the commission, and his background is a good fit, uh, with the experience in both public and private sectors, so I just wanted to read that into the record. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, any other public comment, please? Alright, I don't see any public comments, so we'll bring it back to uh, to the uh, council, and um, does anybody have a motion they'd like to make?
I moved to accept Aaron Hakkinen, Diane Stockness, and the renewal of Tom Hopkins. Um, that was the other one, right, Tom Hopkins?
Alright, we have Davies and Columbus as first and second, so uh, Dave, could you do a roll call, please?
Yeah, we'll get right to it, uh, Councilmember Grover?
Yes.
Columbus?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Davies?
Yes.
And Ladwig has been excused, so that is a four uh, votes yes in support of the renewal of um, uh, Stockness and Hopkins to another term, as well as Aaron Hakkinen, who's the Planning Commissioner.
Okay.
Yeah, I think all those other names are people that are gone, I think sometimes that stays up there. Cause I, I doubt all these people are left, but.
Well, I will tell you, if we really rush, we might get out of here before eleven, so, I, I don't know if we have any, if you have some uh, future agenda items that you'd like to discuss tonight, or you can, and, that we can move on, we've got quite a few things already for the next agenda, but if somebody has something they'd like to pass on to Eli, so we have?
I've got one thing.
Great.
I, I would like us to consider when we're making um, committees, that we have some kind of a format that this is done, where the committee, you know, needs to have a certain amount of time and a task, it's written up, and, and the people in the meetings are noticed. It's just, we've been running into some, so many issues with ad hoc committees, and I, I think we should look at some kind of a really transparent way of, of forming committees, so maybe we could have a discussion about that.
Great, thank you, anybody else? Okay, you guys wanna go home, or, oh, here we go.
No, just wanna make sure we go over on the next meeting committee assignments. I have a couple recommendations, so, that, that's still gonna be on the agenda for the next meeting, am I correct?
Yeah, well, yeah, it can, these all, we'll go to the next meeting, and they'll keep going until we get them all done.
That's it, thank you.
Yeah, uh, Sh- Sherry?
You know, I have to applaud you, gentlemen, thank you so much for um, your due diligence and listening to your community. It is definitely hard work to be a public service, and, you know, I listen to your opinions and your perspectives, and they're all important and different, and, you know, I just wanted to say, as a resident of Trinidad for so many years, um, you know, I do appreciate the work that you do for our community. And I just leave you on that, so working till eleven o'clock at night, um, so thank you very much.
All right, well, it, it sounds like we're all set, so I'm gonna adjourn the meeting, and say goodnight to everybody.
Goodnight, everybody.
Goodnight, everyone.